Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It is the appropriate time at 3 o'clock in the afternoon for the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. I want to welcome everybody that has joined us in chambers and those that are watching us live. I call this meeting to order. We are first going to start off with the invocation. I would like to invite Dr. Devin Graham, Ph.D., the Florida Assistant State Director of American Atheists Incorporated and President of the Humanist of Tallahassee to provide our invocation. Will you please stand and join me? Dr. Graham, welcome to your chambers.
Thank you. Mayor Daley, council members, thank you for this opportunity. I should note that today is International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and on this solemn occasion, I hope that we can live in a world that will never have to experience anything like that again. This is one of those rare invocations where you won't get in trouble if you don't bow your head or close your eyes, and I'm actually going to encourage you not to. I'd like you to look around the room and around the Zoom screen and at those that are present today. We're surrounded by people, both in person and virtually, who come from very different backgrounds and belief systems with very different ideas of when and how things should be done. Despite these differences, we are united by our humanity and by our desire to do what's best for our community. Let's not ever forget that. And while no major injuries have been reported following today's storm yet, I have no doubt that we would work together as a community to help those in need and those without a strong voice at the table. We're living in a polarizing time, and it seems like we're entering a new era where the ground rules change on a daily basis. If the comments on social media and news outlet sites are any indication, it cannot be easy to govern in times like these. So with that, I encourage you, as commissioners and city leaders, to make decisions that best meet the needs of the people of Tallahassee, to recognize and appreciate the perspective of those with perhaps the minority viewpoint, and with those decisions, to remain on the right side of history. Thank you.
Dr. Graham, that was beautiful. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. We have a very special guest with us today. Macy Hartman, will you please join us at the microphone, who will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you the first female Eagle Scout of the Swanee River Area Council. Macy, I am so proud of you, and I know I speak for my colleagues. You are a trailblazer for many young women in our community. Congratulations. And as I told you earlier, I have two young boys, one who has just started his Boy Scout journey, and one who is a Cub Scout, who look up to leaders like you. Thank you for setting the example. And before you start the Pledge of Allegiance, let me wish you a very happy birthday.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, could I say how proud I am as well of this young lady? I happen to serve on the board of the Swanee River Area Council of Boy Scouts of America, and these are the kind of young people that we're grooming to be our next generation of leaders. So, again, congratulations, and we're so proud of you.
Macy, if you will do the honors. Ladies and gentlemen, the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eagle Scout Hartman, you can please be seated. You do have the microphone. If you would like to say a couple of words or possibly introduce your father, who is here with you as well, I know he is proud.
Oh, he's got to be.
Yes, my dad, Roger Hartman, is here with me today, and I'd just like to say thank you all for inviting me to come say the Pledge of Allegiance for you guys, and I'm so honored. And it's my pride and joy to be here and have set such an example for your kids and for the future leaders in America.
Yes, ma'am. We are very, very proud of you. Now, I understand, Macy, that you cannot stay with us long because you actually have to drive back to Childs High School, where you are a starter on the basketball team, and you've got a big game tonight as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. On your birthday, I hope you have a triple double tonight, right?
Thank you.
Macy, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you so much for having me.
Mr. Hartman, on personal note, thank you for your service to our country as well. We certainly do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Have a great meeting.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.05 has been removed from your agenda materials. We will add that at a later date. Item 13.02, it has been updated since its original publishing with your agenda material that includes COVID plans for certain springtime activities. And we are moving item 9.05 from your consent agenda to Section 10 for discussion to understand there is a registered speaker on that item.
Okay, 9.05 has been pulled from consent. Okay, we will deal with it after the consent agenda. Any questions on the agenda modifications, colleagues? Seeing none, do we have any presentations today, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir. No presentations.
Any formal announcements before this body today, sir?
No, sir.
Actually, real quickly, do you want to provide a brief update on the tornado that did hit our community?
Yes, sir. And I've got Rob McGar, our General Manager of Electric, and David Pollard should be joining us via WebEx if we want to go deeper today. Earlier today, we know that we had a tornado touchdown in our community. It created damage at our airport. Thankfully, there were no injuries at the airport. It did turn over a small aircraft. It damaged a state hangar, but thankfully, no injuries. And again, David Pollard's with us if you would like to know more about that. We also are addressing widespread power outages that were caused. We reached about 5,000 outages at peak. I'm not sure what the status is at the moment.
Excellent. Any questions for City Manager? I know I can speak for the commission in thanking all the men and women of the City of Tallahassee, family, police department, fire department, underground utilities, beautification, everybody that's played a role in today's, this afternoon's events. Before we get to citizen input on agenda items, do we have any appearances before the City Commission formally by other governments?
No, sir.
Excellent. All right, let's go straight into citizen input on agenda items. Mr. Cook, it's good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to walk us through the process?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have speakers who have registered to speak here in chambers. We'll take those individuals first. We also have a number of people who have registered to connect with us virtually. We also have written comment. The written comment has been distributed to you and also posted to Board Docs with the other agenda materials. I'll just quickly summarize it on the written comment. They were on item 1301, Midtown Working Group. We had three or four comments all supporting a master plan. Had a half dozen comments on 1302, which is special events and COVID preparations for the same, each of those supportive of having events with appropriate COVID plans. And then un-agended comments, we did receive some of those as well, all relating either to homeless concerns or supportive of Tallahassee Fire Department. So that kind of summarizes the written comments, but again, those will be made part of the public record.
All right, Mr. Cook, before we begin, let me remind the general public, if you're here to speak on an agenda item, we will have the opportunity to hear you while we are on that item. We just provide this particular part of the agenda for if you do not think that you will be able to stay for the entire meeting. If you would rather defer until the agenda item is up, there will be time to speak then as well.
And Mayor, our first speaker here in person is Brian Cherry on item 905 that you just pulled from your, from your agenda, so it's now Section 10. But we'll have Brian Cherry speak first. Speakers can come to the microphone there in the center of the room directly and...
Mr. Cherry, would you like to speak now or wait until we pull the item?
I'll defer.
Okay.
Okay. Other individuals in person are Katie Hagerty on Midtown Working Group, who may be choosing to wait for the time of the item. Jake Varn, also on item 1301.
Mr. Varn, do you want to wait? Yes, sir. Okay.
And I think the last in-person speaker I have at this time is Don Corello, also on 1301. And you're waiting for the item as well? Or if you'd like to speak now, now would be...
Please, please.
Absolutely.
Thanks for joining us.
We'll give you three minutes. I'll put a timer, but there'll be a light straight, straight in front of you that starts turning yellow and red as your time gets close to the end.
Great, excellent. All right. Hi, I'm Don Corello, 1425 Colonial Drive. I also own Waterworks at the intersection of Thomasville Road and Beard Street. I've lived in Midtown for 25 years, owned Waterworks at that location for 20 years. So obviously, I have quite a few opinions about the whole Midtown situation. I'm a member of the working group as well. I know there's a big master plan that's happening, but I just want to implore the commission to not let a perfect master plan get in the way of any improvements we can make sooner rather than later. Being right on Thomasville Road, where the speed limit's 25 miles an hour, I guarantee you, many people do not know that. They travel very quickly, and unlike Gaines Street, that's bordered by two universities, a state capitol, and a giant football stadium, Midtown's bordered by four historic neighborhoods. And I would like to see the people of those neighborhoods be able to safely and comfortably walk to our businesses, and people outside of the area able to drive and then park someplace they know they can get a parking space at, and then safely go on their way. So what I would like to see is the crosswalks that have been talked about from the state and the blueprint people. Let's install those as soon as possible on Thomasville Road. Let's widen the sidewalks to make it where you're not feeling like you're just in another lane of traffic on Thomasville Road, and let's make it really accessible, especially coming out of COVID, to where we can make the improvement starting now, instead of letting us fully reopen and then having to go through all that construction situation. So the sooner we can start on these projects, the better it is for all of us merchants and the residents of Midtown as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
Mayor, those, those are all of the speakers I have in person. If you, you want me to call the virtual connections at this point as well?
Same situation. If they'd like to speak now, they can, or if they'd like to wait for the agenda item, that's fine as well.
Then, as I do that, I will ask each of the speakers who's connected virtually, when I call your name, if you would like to speak later when the item comes up, if you would simply say defer, that way we'll know you're there and you've chosen to wait. And if you would like to speak at the present time, you may go ahead and do so, and I will give you a verbal cue when you're getting close to your three minutes. On the item 1301, connected virtually, we have Carol Pierce.
Ms. Pierce, are you with us?
I'd like to speak.
Excellent. Your name and address for the record, please.
815 East Sixth Avenue, Tallahassee.
You may begin, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. I have been with NAI-Talcor for some time, like from the beginning, and I've been with them, involved with all of the placemaking in Midtown. I've been a member of Midtown Merchants in years, for years, we've been trying to get new people to join us, and we've done many functions here, from the trolley downtown to Talufo Fest. And our goal, along with Don, is to have Midtown be a place where people want to come and spend their money and socialize with each other safely. And I just encourage you to please do what you can to make that happen.
Thank you.
That's all.
I'm sorry.
That's all.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate it. Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Kathy McGuire, and then Sean Nyberg. So Kathy McGuire.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Defer, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Cook.
Sean Nyberg.
Hi, I'm here. I'd like to go ahead and speak.
Please, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. This is Sean Nyberg at 919 Brookwood Drive. Should I go ahead?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm representing the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods with these remarks, so I'm just going to go ahead and read what I have. That's all right?
Yes, sir.
I apologize. ATN supports the four Midtown Working Group recommendations as presented to the staff in the staff report and recommends that the MWG continue to guide the planning process for Midtown. However, we believe that the next critical step is to proceed with the Midtown Master Plan as the City Commission directed two years ago. The initial phase of Midtown planning was limited in scope, emphasizing parking solutions and some pedestrian safety enhancements. But now, upcoming changes accelerate the need for the broader Midtown Master Plan. First, there's the moving of the police station. Second, there's the development of Northwood Mall to accommodate the police station, housing, and supporting amenities. And finally, there's the scheduled multimillion-dollar allocations for a variety of Midtown transportation and livability improvements. Spending 1% of the allocation on a master plan to ensure the success of the whole would be a wise investment. To bring our dreams for Midtown to reality, there needs to be a plan that organizes and sequences the projects under one broad Midtown vision. We strongly encourage the City Commission to push forward with the Midtown Master Plan that would guide growth and development into the future to create and enhance public open space, multimodal transportation, connectivity between businesses and neighborhoods, and a coherent sense of place. A good first step would be for the city planning staff to work with the MWG to define the scope of a master plan request for proposal. A master plan should be contracted out to a private planning firm to facilitate the coordination and cooperation of the government, business, neighborhoods, and visitor audiences. ATN appreciates the efforts of the Midtown Working Group and its staff, and as the city moves forward with its working groups in Midtown, the South Side, and other areas of Tallahassee, we believe there's room for improvements in the staff, citizen planning process, particularly as project complexity increases. ATN re...
We just lost your audio.
...and recommendations. And two, the decision-making criteria be based on some level of consensus that doesn't require audience unanimity. The current standard inhibits finding workable solutions to the complex problems inherent in planning these types of improvements. If proposed solutions cannot meet a consensus standard, the issue should be brought to the City Commission for resolution.
You have about 10 seconds.
And finally, I'm sorry?
You have about 10 seconds.
Excellent. ATN shares the vision and excitement that the mayor and the commissioners have shown for Midtown, and we encourage you to adopt the four recommendations and to direct staff to hire a consultant to design a master plan that will optimize our opportunities in Midtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Cook.
Mayor, we have a half dozen other people who registered to speak on 1301 but did not connect before the meeting.
Okay.
I'm gonna go through those names very quickly. I'll just pause briefly. I'm assuming they're not there, but if they speak up, we'll, we'll take them.
And if they're not there, then we'll try again when we actually get to the item.
Yes, sir. Randy Dinker.
Hey, Randy. Ms. Dinker, would you like to wait till the agenda item, or would you like to speak now? I think you said you want to speak now, and we cannot hear you.
Yes, I would like to speak now, yes. Can you hear me now?
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, sure. Now, if you can begin.
All right, great. Hello, I'm Randy Dinker, 552 East Georgia Street, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association and our approximate 800 family members. We are, we are a board of directors of nine people, and we have unanimously adopted a resolution which we sent to the commission. I apologize for sending it only yesterday. I hope you've had a chance to read it. The, as you may remember, when the garage controversy was going on, there was an enormous turnout of people really concerned about this issue, and we packed a room with well over 100 people, and they were out the door on the street. I know some of you commissioners were there, so you remember it. And that's the level of concern that we have on this issue because we are one of the neighborhoods most directly impacted by what happens in Midtown. And we, this is not a neighborhood versus a merchant issue. We are all on the same team here. We want to see a really vibrant, exciting Midtown. So we think the best way to do that is with a master plan because too much is happening piecemeal right now, and we need to pull all the disparate threads together into one cohesive vision. And I don't know if you've all had a chance to read the resolution that our board sent, but I, I don't know if I have time to read it now, but let me just hit the highlights. What we would like to see is six points. The first is a search for an independent professional planning group with a reputation for innovative and creative urban planning, chosen with input from the Midtown Working Group. Second, we'd like to see the staff bring several choices to the commission, with the commission making the final decision. If the cost is below the threshold that requires competitive bidding, then we'd just like to see a proposal put on the city agenda and voted on. If the cost will be above the threshold, then we would like to see Midtown Working Group have input in the wording of the bid offer because it's really important that we get everything into it. And once the planning group is hired, we think there should be meaningful public charrettes and meetings with stakeholders. And when it is finally completed, we would like to see it adopted as a law because the last thing we want is to spend all that money and then have it sit on a shelf. We want to see it be adopted as a law so then it'll be enforceable and mandatory.
You have about 30 seconds.
Am I past my time? Okay. Anyway, we have an exciting, a very exciting opportunity now to build something really innovative. This can be a template for future growth. Let's not let this exciting moment pass. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Dinker. Thanks for joining us.
Fay Gibson, and then Jane Estrada. So Fay Gibson, you may begin. If you'll give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hello, yeah. This is Jane Estrada. I just wanted to second what Randy Dinker said. I'll be very brief. I grew up near Niagara Falls. Niagara Falls went through some excruciatingly bad master planning, and I witnessed the results, and it taught me at the ground level how bad things can be if there is not a master plan that is bought into and carefully sifted through the population of basically stakeholders. Any other time I've got, I'd like to cede back to Ms. Dinker or somebody who has more to say about this than I do, but that's, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fay Gibson, I want to make sure I didn't miss Fay Gibson.
Ms. Gibson's with us.
Yes. Thank you, Fay Gibson. And I...
Your connection is not very clear. Sometimes, if you can turn off your video, that may improve the connection, but give it a try again.
Okay. Okay, I was just saying, I'd like to waive my time until this comes to the agenda. I'd like to hear what the city has to say.
All right.
Thank you.
Next is Nina Alexander. If not Nina Alexander, then we'll move to Cecilia Shaw. Angela Prather.
Or Ellery...
Defer, please.
Yes. All right, I heard someone begin there. Who was that, please?
Defer, please. That was Angela Prather.
Got you. Thank you.
837 Pine Street.
I've got you, Mark, to come back at the later time. Ellery Sedgwick. Okay. Mayor, those are all of the speakers that we have on 1301. We'll come back to those who chose to defer to that later time. For item 13.02, which is your COVID-19 mitigation and special events, we have a number of people registered as well. The first of those is Mark Mushton, and then Jane Barron.
Former Commissioner Mushton, are you with us?
I am, Mr. Mayor. I'll defer till you get to that item, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Cook.
Jane Barron.
Ms. Barron, are you with us?
I am, thank you. I'd like to defer to the discussion of the, of the item as well, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Barron.
I'll defer.
Thank you. Elizabeth Emanuel.
Defer, please, and thank you.
You're welcome, and Pam Daufek.
Defer, thank you.
And was Chris Howell able to connect with us?
Defer, thank you.
All right, all of the speakers on that item will be speaking later with the item. Any other registered speakers we have, mayor and commissioners, are on un-agended items, so we will take those folks at the end of our meeting.
Excellent, thank you. We are on the consent agenda. I know that we have had, help me out one more time, Mr. Manager.
Item 9.05 has been pulled.
9.05 has been pulled. Is there a motion for the rest of the consent agenda?
Move consent.
Second. Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We are on 9.05, Mr. Manager.
I'll introduce, and I believe we have at least one speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Correct.
Let me turn the page. Item 9.05 seeks your approval of pre-qualified contractors for sidewalk construction and rehabilitation services. This is part of our normal course of work in our Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department. There are seven proposers that are recommended for your approval. They include Sanco, M. of Tallahassee, Hale Contracting, Pyramid Excavation, North Florida Asphalt, Dowdy Corporation, and CWR Contracting.
And our speaker on this item, Mr. Clerk.
Speaker on this item is Brian Cherry.
Mr. Cherry, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Cherry, 150 South Monroe Street, Suite 303, Tallahassee, Florida. I have a presentation. Here we go. Thank you. That's before you. Obviously, we would have preferred to have this conversation with everyone prior to the City Commission meeting today. However, due to the tone of silence with this bid solicitation, this is our first time to discuss this item with you, so I will try to be brief, although this is a pretty complex, can be a complex issue. We'll try to simplify it in three minutes and ask questions later. Our position is not against anybody who's listed on that approval list before you today at all. We, our position is that Capital Asphalt, however, should be one of the vendors that are before you for approval for this particular bid opportunity, which I think it's important to understand, this bid was a pre-qualified vendor list, so they asked questions in the approval process to make sure that you're licensed, for example, and meet other criteria, of course. So this wasn't a bid where you actually bid quantity, bid unit prices. We were not included, clearly, and so the impact that this would cause on our business, I don't know that we can put a quantity on what exactly it would be not to be able to bid for these services for the next three years. We believe there were three technical issues by the City of Tallahassee's procurement vendor BidSync, which caused us not being included on this bid today. We've outlined them throughout this PowerPoint. I'm not going to go through every point. First being, when we submitted our bid, our attachments were not properly transmitted through the BidSync system to the City of Tallahassee. The key point here, and I'll flip to it, in your PowerPoint here is the confirmation email that we received. Not only does it say that we received, that BidSync received the proposal, but it says, it lists our uniquely named attachments. And in your packet that I handed you, there's a blow up of this, because I know this on the screen's probably very difficult to see. This to us is key. We were confirmed that our submission was accepted. It showed our attachments. Checked the box, we moved on. We're waiting to bid on work and the approval list to be, to be sent out. However, City of Tallahassee did not receive those, those attachments. We were not notified until the next day from the City of Tallahassee that our attachments were not included in the bid, and therefore, any attachments that were sent subsequent to the bid date due line, deadline could not be accepted. BidSync states, the email that we provided you today, that they have no record of that confirmation email, surprisingly, ever being sent to Capital Asphalt, although we produced it for you today. That was the second technical issue. The third technical issue is Capital Asphalt never received the intent of award notification.
You are at three minutes.
If I may wrap up very quickly.
Ms. Cherry, sure. Wrap it up.
The intent to award notification is very important here. That would have given us an opportunity to protest the award that's before you today. Of course, we never would, we don't want to protest. We don't want to go that route. However, we were told from procurement staff that that would be our only recourse here, would be to protest. So we waited on the intent to award to hit the street. It was never sent to our email, although BidSync claims that they did. We would say that this is the third technical issue in the process of online bidding that led to us not being included on this list. An additional and final point that we believe led to the ultimate recommendation that's before you today, the point of contact in the City of Tallahassee's procurement office, retired. He was not consulted with about this particular bid or the issues that we experienced technically. We've asked numerous times to please consult with him. That has not been done. We actually reached out to this individual prior to him retiring and we asked him, can we see the list of vendors that were apparently put on this list? He himself couldn't even find it. He actually informed us that if it were up to him, due to the circumstances, he would have allowed us to continue to bid.
So Ms. Cherry, can I get you to wrap up the comments?
Where we are today is, we would ask that the city commission, we would ask that respectfully, that you all would consider allowing us, due to the technical issues that have happened here, due to the evidence that we provided to you all, considering adding us to the qualified vendor list. If you're unable to do that due to the short notice that we've been able to speak with you here, we would ask that you postpone the award. We don't want to delay sidewalk work in this city. We understand that's important to everyone and all the vendors that are on there, not just Capital Asphalt. However, due to the circumstances, if you're not able to add us to the list, we would respectfully request that the commission would go back, postpone this, do a little more due diligence, meet with us, let us present to you all. We've asked multiple times, what can we show you to show proof that we did not receive this notification? And we were told that our only option would be to come here today. So that's where we are. I thank you for the opportunity to speak for you and I'll stand ready for any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think at this time it would be appropriate to, to hear from our procurement director. This, this matter was brought to our procurement office's attention in December when this, this came up. There was no bid protest, as Mr. Cherry indicated, which is a requirement if there's any concern in order to preserve their space in line. But our procurement director, Veronica McCracken, she's on WebEx, she did look into it. She contacted BidSync to do an audit to determine what was in the system, whether or not an email notification went out, the very things that Mr. Cherry has talked about. And so there has been some due diligence on this and I think it would be appropriate to get her comments at this time.
Absolutely.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right. Mr. Cherry pointed out three issues. One was receipt of their bid. This was the RFQ for sidewalk construction rehabilitation. It was released on September 18. Bids were due on October 20 at 4:30 PM. Capital Asphalt was notified the next day that their bids were not received. There was consultation back and forth between the agent, Mr. Threewitz, and Capital Asphalt, primarily Candace Grant. At the end of the day, there was no record from BidSync reflecting that they had uploaded their technical proposal. The award was posted on December 2 at 1:40 PM and notices went out to all those that responded, including Capital Asphalt. The very next day, we have correspondence between BidSync and Capital Asphalt and Ms. Grant, where she is resurrecting the issue of whether or not their bid was received. So there was awareness on the part of Capital Asphalt that the notice of award had been posted. And that is critical because once that notice is posted, it is a 72-hour period in which Capital Asphalt has the opportunity to protest. That period ended on Monday, December 7 at 1:40 PM. I have since conferred numerous times with Mr. Cherry to say, I never received a notice of protest, and that is the appropriate forum in which he was to raise their claim. And so with that, I also note, in our solicitations, we make very clear on its face and plain language that if you fail to file within that period, your issue is waived. So even if there is merit to what Mr. Cherry is saying, his opportunity to raise it, to raise it, he has missed that window. But with that said, that is kind of the position of procurement. It is our position that you should be able to accept the seven vendors that are available. I believe that is an ample body of vendors to be able to meet the city's needs.
Mr. Mayor, so Ms. McCracken just indicated, obviously, the rules, procurement rules are very prescriptive. And she did look into it when it was raised to determine if there was any variance that could be applied, but clearly, there was no objection within the 72-hour period. And there's, there is comfort that the company was notified and had awareness of it. So that's the basis of the recommendation. If you would like, we can certainly explore what the options are to include, which may entail going through the process again, but certainly we'll take your direction on that matter.
So two questions, real quick, then we'll go down the line. Question number one, this is not the awarding of a particular project. This is just the approved vendor list, correct?
Yes, sir. If I could elaborate on that, that's a good question because sometimes we award directly for a project that has a price. But in this case, it's very customary, if we know we have ongoing work, we will compile a list of eligible contractors, pre-establish a contract with them, and then the department can freely work with them to, in this case, repair sidewalks and build sidewalks. So this, this simply establishes a list that the department can contract with for the work they expect in the future.
So it's just a running list and whoever's at the top of the list gets the next job and then they rotate down to the, is that just kind of?
There's different methods. In this case, there's so much work in that area, my guess is they would all be engaged at some point because of the extensive nature of sidewalk, sidewalk repairs in our community.
So I'm seeing seven companies, not including this particular issue. Seven, how many, how many bids did y'all receive to be approved vendors?
Seven. Responsive, there's a key word responsive. These were the seven that were responsive.
How many were non-responsive besides Capital Asphalt?
Ms. McCracken.
That was the only one, to my knowledge.
Okay. So we're talking about an approved vendor list, we're not given direct contracts to any particular company. There was eight entities who initially responded, seven were considered responsive, one non-responsive.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
For the public that's listening, define what BidSync is.
I'm sorry?
For the public that's listening, explain to them what BidSync is.
Ms. McCracken, you'll do it better than me, please. Go ahead.
Sure. BidSync is the platform in which we announce and release our solicitations. It is also the tool by which we receive our, our bids and proposals from vendors that are interested in doing business with the city.
So this is an application or, or tool to solicit bids, correct?
Correct.
Has there ever been any issues or problems similar to the ones that we're hearing about today?
Not to my knowledge. I sit here being, you know, tomorrow will be a year for me, but not to my knowledge have we had an issue, at least from talking to my staff, like this.
And Ms. McCracken, you are confident that you all have followed the rules of procurement as listed in Florida Statute 287?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Porter, did I see your hand?
Yes, but Commissioner Williams-Cox asked my questions, so we're good to go.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question that I had was if the proposal was responsive and they got the confirmation email, but then when, when BidSync was contacted, they refused to, they refused to comment. That's what I'm not quite understanding. Why would they refuse to comment if in fact there is proof of a received bid?
Commissioner, and, and our procurement director has more knowledge of that, and that may not be something she talked about, but she contacted BidSync to do an audit to discover if there was any evidence of this out there. And so Veronica, I'm not sure if you've had a discussion with BidSync on that.
No, no. I can certainly, in the email exchange that Capital Asphalt had with BidSync, they, they note immediately with Capital Asphalt that, that the technical proposal was not uploaded. They do not show a receipt. So there was communication with BidSync between Capital Asphalt and BidSync where they emailed them and said they do not have a record of their technical proposal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the, in the attachment, Capital Asphalt sent in of their email, it shows an attachment and refers to that bid attachment. So that attachment was never received, is that the issue?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it would appear that at least if I received this email, I would have, my assumption would be that the attachment was sent in and, and was received based on the confirmation email, assuming it's valid. So I mean, a couple of other questions I would just have is, with this contract previously, how many vendors have we worked with?
Repeat that, so I didn't hear you.
Veronica, how many vendors did we have in the, the prior contract, equivalent contract?
I believe it might have been seven or eight. I would honestly need to go back and, and check, Commissioner Matlow.
I think it says nine.
Nine.
Agenda materials.
Okay. And, and generally, would we accept everybody who's responsive that meets the minimum qualifications?
That, that would be the standard course. There may be an exception, but the standard course is that if we need many vendors, we would accept those that are responsive.
And has Capital Asphalt ever been a City of Tallahassee vendor previously?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Have you ever had any problems with them? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
That's, I was going to ask that question.
I, I don't know. I can't answer that affirmatively or not, but that would not be the basis of this decision.
Understood.
Yeah, and I cannot speak to that either.
She says, that was, that did not come into play in this consideration.
I understand.
Yeah.
You know, I would say, you know, we do have a dispute process that we would like everybody to follow. I mean, that is the standard way, if there's a dispute during a procurement, protest it. But in light of, you know, seeing the documentation and thinking, does this make sense? Did they submit it? Would they have been a qualified vendor if this played out and was not a technical difficulty? It does make sense if our standard practice has been to accept everybody who's eligible and then assign contracts later, just based on our processes, I would be inclined to say, let's go ahead and accept, you know, keep our options open. You know, it's my goal to build as many sidewalks as we can. You know, hopefully in future years, we're going to expand that and we would need the hard work of all of these companies to continue working.
Colleagues.
I would move that we accept staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
So the motion on the table is for staff recommendation that would exclude Capital Asphalt, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion on table.
I would second that motion.
Okay. So there is a motion on table, staff recommendation's been properly seconded. I will support the motion on the table. However, I would like to have a follow-up conversation. They're about the process with our, with our approved vendor list in general, but when is the next time, is this going to be an annual decision? So they're out for a year?
No, in this case, it's a three-year contract with potential two one-year extensions. So it would be a three-year baseline contract.
So they're out for five years.
I, I would not presume they will extend it, I think that, but it's potential, it's three to five years. Yes, sir.
That's, so it's not an annual renewal of, of, of...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I, I see, I see your dilemma, but as a business owner, we had to see that too. And I would have, the reason I'm seconding the motion is because what we have on the table is an opportunity to protest.
Yes.
And Capital Asphalt did not take advantage of that. I would have been fighting tooth and nail, knowing what was on the table. I would have fought tooth and nail within that, that, that period of time because if we make exceptions now, we'll be making exceptions for others to come. And we, since I've been here, we've not made those types of exceptions. So that's, that's kind of where my thought processes are right now, that we've got to be fair across the board. So that's why I, I have, I'm supporting this, this motion. And by the way, happy anniversary, Ms. McCracken.
Thank you.
Did not realize it was your anniversary. I know this is exactly how you want to spend your anniversary.
One-year anniversary.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I certainly can sympathize with CAI. And that's why I asked the question that I asked, but we do have a, a protest process that could have been followed. It was, they chose not to follow that process. And I'm just concerned that we set a difficult, a, a bad precedent here because if somebody sees this, this time, and, and it hasn't happened in the six years I've been on the commission, and I just think we would, we would set a, a bad precedent if we accepted, if we didn't accept staff recommendation when there was an opportunity to protest and the choice was made not to protest. And so that's why I made the motion and will be supporting the staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow.
Mr. Mayor, can we get an answer to why it wasn't protested from the vendor?
Sure. Ms. Cherry, the Mayor Pro Tem's got a question for you.
Diane, over here, thank you. There is a very good explanation why we did not protest. We never received the notice of intent to award, and that's our argument here today. We've offered, Ms. McCracken, the City of Tallahassee, to do a third-party audit of our email system to prove we never received that notice of intent. We were aware through the vendor community that there was a list. So we called the City of Tallahassee. We said, we never received this list. The City of Tallahassee could not even produce the list for us. The individual who was searching for this presumed list that was sent out retired. He was never consulted with. This is a critical, critical point. Of course, we would have protested. Of course, we would have protested. We have offered, and we, we were told by Ms. McCracken, it is not my duty to advise you on what documentation you need to produce to satisfy the City of Tallahassee. You need to go to the City of Tallahassee. And I will say that Ms. McCracken has been absolutely transparent with me. She's answered phone calls, she's called me right back. We're not pointing fingers at her at all. She really wasn't involved in this until a later part. She's been put in a bad position. She didn't know the details. The individual who was the point of contact for this procurement has retired. He was actively seeking this list for us that we could, that we never received, and that is the most crucial point. We never received notification. Therefore, our argument is, our protest period never started. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the response. Yeah, I guess my position still stands, just in light of the extenuating circumstances and hearing that there at least have been at least one technical issue. If we wouldn't feel comfortable awarding everyone, I'd say we'd just start over and bid it back out unless there's imminent projects that would need to be under this contract. Mr. City Manager.
So Mr. Banjer, can you provide a response? Mr. Cherry?
Yes, sir.
And then the Mayor Pro Tem's got a question for you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Ms. McCracken addressed that very issue. I'd like her to repeat that, her answer. She, she addressed that in her original comments in terms of communication and acknowledgement of vendor. Ms. McCracken, please restate what you shared already.
Yes. So the posting was on December 2 at 1:40 PM. Capital Asphalt was notified of the posted award. Capital Asphalt was notified of the posted award. They received their notice, they received two notices, one at 1:37 PM and also another at 1:40 PM. In addition to that, we have email correspondence between Capital Asphalt and BidSync on December 3rd. There was communication with the purchasing agent, Robert Threewitz, as well. So there was clear notice and awareness that the notice had been posted based on the email activity that was going back and forth and trying to get resolution related to this issue. So from where I sit, they were clearly aware that the notice had been posted. This is not Capital Asphalt's first rodeo. They are clearly aware of the ground rules, and they missed that opportunity. I am sympathetic to what they have experienced, but that is the lay of the land. And I want to reiterate what Commissioner Cox has said, that we need to follow those parameters, because otherwise, the precedent that you set will be something that we'll follow hereafter.
Mr. Mayor, how can you continue with that? So Ms. McCracken is the procurement director. So she was in charge of the department when the other gentleman, Mr. Threewitz, which would have retired, she was working, he was working under her direction. So she's not a peer to Mr. Threewitz. She was his and is the superior in the department. She's familiar with the matters and she's capable in these issues. This is not intended to be punitive. This is, this is simply, and as we all know, procurement is a very rule-driven effort. And so that, the recommendation of staff is simply based on the rules, the parameters of what we do and what we execute and what the case is here.
Okay. Any other questions? Motion on table for the staff recommendation has been made by the Mayor Protim, excuse me, by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. I will support the motion on the table. I don't like this, though. I just want to say that for the record.
I don't either.
And I would like a copy. Now that this is over and it's no longer quasi-judicial, I would like a copy of the communications, email communications that took place between Capital Asphalt and procurement, just so I can have an understanding of exactly what happened on this as a learning tool as we move forward. Any other comments? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It passes 5-0. Okay, we are now, is there any other consent agenda before us?
No, sir.
All right. Lost my place, I'm sorry.
We're on item 1101, Mr. Mayor.
11.01, yes, sir. Mr. Treasurer Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the first of several you have with board appointments this evening, this one being the most extensive. Mayor and Commissioners, you approved establishment of a citizens' police review board in September of 2020. You did so by ordinance. The board obviously is new, so staff is asking you to appoint someone to each of the nine seats established for the board. As you're well aware, each of you will appoint one member of the nine. The other four positions are to represent community-based, social, or civic organizations. We received a dozen applications with a letter of nomination or support. The other details are in the agenda item that was available to the public and provided to you as well. And I'll give it to the mayor to coordinate your selection process here, but I'll just remind you that in addition to appointing the members, we as staff do recommend options two and three as well, which will allow my office to assign an initial staggering of terms, so that initial terms will be one, two, or three years, as selected at random, so that we don't have every seat expiring at the same time. And then the other item would be for the city inspector general to bring an agenda item back to you on February 20, oh, I'm sorry, February 10th, for you to select a chair for this board. Your ordinance specifies that you will identify the chair for the first year, but it's not appropriate for us to bring that to you tonight, because you don't know who's there and we don't know who's interested. But inspector general would bring that back on February 20, on February 10th, even though I want to make it the 20-something, it's February 10th. Mr. Mayor?
Excellent, thank you. All right, so here's how I'd like to proceed with this, colleagues. First of all, after we hear from any citizens that want to be heard on this particular item that are here, let's entertain a motion if you all are comfortable with, or staff recommendation, option one, two, and three. After that motion clears, we will then proceed with the individual appointments. And we will just go right down the road. Everybody tell who you're gonna appoint on. That'll give us five. We each get the individual. And then from there, we'll just open it up and take motions and we'll go from there. So with that, why don't we go ahead and hear from the public on this particular item? Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we have no individuals who have signed to speak here in person, and nor do I see any who have asked to comment on our WebEx connection, so it's up to you.
Wonderful. One last call. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, Mr.?
Who's staff recommendation on options one, two, and three, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, there is a motion for staff recommendations for options one, two, and three, made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there any questions on this process moving forward from here?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Protim?
Option one is appoint the members. Should we just be doing two and three first, or?
Options number one is appoint members to the CPRB, which we will do immediately following this motion.
Okay.
All right, seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox for staff recommendation, options one, two, and three, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, let's go right down the line. Commissioner Porter, your nominee, or, excuse me, your appointment.
I would like to appoint Mr. Barry Monroe.
Okay. Mr. Barry Monroe has been appointed. Commissioner Williams Cox?
I would like to appoint Nia Hubbard.
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time?
Nia Hubbard.
Nia Hubbard has been appointed by Commissioner Williams Cox? Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
I would like to appoint Mr. Mayor Rashad Mujahid.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Rashad Mujahid, number 57.
Number 57, okay. Rashad has been appointed by Commissioner Richardson. Mayor Protim?
I'd like to appoint Mr. Luther Lee.
Mr. Luther Lee, 35? Okay. Mr. Luther Lee. I will be appointing number 43, Mr. Tom Napier. Mr. Clerk, are you clear on the individual appointments?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I have Barry Monroe, Nia Hubbard, Rashad Mujahid, Luther Lee, and Tom Napier.
Excellent, wonderful. Okay, so there's five. Now we have four more as a body to nominate. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to nominate Suzanne Van Wick for the National Action Network.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question.
Hold on, just a second. I'll come to you when, when we are done with the floor here, okay? You have a motion for Suzanne Van Wick.
Am I giving you four names or we doing them one at a time?
You have the floor.
Okay. Okay, well, okay, we have Suzanne Van Wick, Thomas Haines with the Urban League, Robert Streeter III with United Methodist Church, and Agnes Fury with Dream Builders, Greatness Center. Those are the four that I would nominate.
There's a motion on the table for, might not get these in the right order, but Suzanne Van Wick, Robert Streeter III, Thomas Haines Jr., Agnes Fury. Is there a second to the motion?
Question, Mr. Mayor. If there is a second to the motion, does that, how will we then vote on these four? Because there are a couple that I agree with Commissioner Williams Cox on, but I had a couple of others that I was interested in seeing appointed as well.
Okay. Why don't we get a second to the motion so we can begin discussion? And I think that during discussion, maybe this will formulate. There's always the opportunity for a motion to be withdrawn and a new motion to be made or a substitute motion to be made, but we have to start the conversation somewhere.
Okay. Second for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second for discussion. We'll come down to Commissioner Porter.
Yes, Mr. Cook, I was wondering if you could let us know the racial and gendered makeup of the board right now, based on our first set of appointments?
All men and one female? I've been keeping that count.
Two black males, two white males, and Nia is African-American.
Black female.
Black female.
Right, so you would have three white, two black members, and four male and one female members. If I'm putting all those pieces together, I had not completed looking at the applications, but I believe that's the correct summary.
Everybody take your time. Let's make sure we get this right.
Yeah. According to the way I have it, Mr. Mayor, we have two black males, one black female, two white males.
I have that too.
Four males and one female.
Okay, and then just for the sake of beginning the discussion, the nomination that has been made at least right now with the motion would be, let's see here.
Two white females.
Two white females.
And two black males.
And two black males, okay. You still have the floor, Commissioner Porter?
I feel similarly to Commissioner Richardson. There are some people who I would support, and there's no one, you know, who I'm against. I do feel like, you know, I feel strongly about the LGBTQ community being represented on this board. And as far as I can tell, Taylor Bureau is the only person who has been nominated by a civic group that represents the LGBTQ community. So I would like to see that representation included as well, and that's just a comment for consideration by my colleagues.
Okay, I'm keeping a running list. And colleagues, let's, let's set the tone of how it should be, and let's talk positive about those individuals. You did it perfectly, Commissioner Porter. We talk about positive individuals that we think would serve, service well on this board. Thank you for setting the example. Okay, Commissioner Richardson, let's come back to you. Who else would you like to enter into discussion?
Yeah, I would like to enter into discussion, Mr. Mayor, Stephen Bean. And I think you said Thomas Haines, Commissioner Williams Cox. Okay, that was one of my others. Suzanne Van Wick, or Wick. I had Barry Monroe, but Commissioner Porter has already appointed him. And Edward Haines.
Edward Gaines, okay. Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see. I do, I concur with many of these. I do think the LGBTQ community should be represented. I do think Taylor Bureau would be a good fit. She's been a strong advocate in the community, especially with homeless issues and at-risk youth. I think that fits right into line with kind of bridging the gap that we're looking for. I do think because of the nature of the board, having some legal minds is not a bad idea. So I could support CB and/or Suzanne Van Wick. I'm not totally familiar with everybody who's been nominated, but I would like to see that we do find that, as we, I think we should find racial balance and gender balance as well as we try to flesh out the remaining picks. Thank you.
Now, and by the way, it's Judge Van Wick. She is an administrative law judge.
Right.
I feel, and thank you so much for appointing her, Commissioner Williams Cox. She was your individual appointment, correct?
Say it again?
No.
No, 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 I'm sorry. She was part of the motion you made. I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep it all straight.
Yes.
And I do think that she would be an amazing, an amazing addition to the board. And she does bring that legal, that legal mind to the table as well as an added benefit. I also think Taylor Bureau would be great. Full disclosure, I just also appointed her onto the Mayor's LGBTQ+ Advisory Council for the fine work that she's doing as well. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware of my interest there. And Mr. Edward Gaines, he grew up with my brother. He's a great guy. And has been a friend of the family for some time. Okay, so where do we want to go from here? Let's keep the discussion going.
So, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I would, where we have agreement? Let's just go ahead and get those folks where we have agreement, and then let's see if we can go from there.
Okay.
That's my thought. Mayor Protim?
Mr. Mayor, I agree. If, and I'm not gonna make the motion yet, but if this makes sense? I would nominate Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wick, and Ed Gaines. It seems like there was some overlap on those three. And then leave the fourth open for another nomination?
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Yep, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I don't know if it's the mask, the glass, or something.
It's all of the above.
Somebody bass out your voice.
It seemed like there was overlap on Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wick, and Ed Gaines. So I would make a nomination for those three.
Second.
So.
But wait, you can't second, we have a motion, my motion is still on the floor.
Commissioner, what I would like to ask you, and it's your decision as the maker of the motion and the seconder, would you like to withdraw your motion, so it's a blank slate, where then we will entertain these three names that were all in agreement? Or would you prefer a substitute motion? And I think it would pass, but if it did not pass, we would be back to the original motion. It is cleaner to have a fresh motion, but you are the maker and I am deferring to you.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay. And thank you for doing so in the spirit of this board. So coming back to you, Mr. Mayor Protim, and thank you for withdrawing the second as well, Commissioner. Mayor Protim, restate your motion, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wick, and Ed Gaines.
Okay. There is a motion for three more appointees for Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wick, and Edward Gaines. There is a second by Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson, did I say your head? Okay, excellent. Are there any further conversations on the motion that's on the table? Great, without further ado, all those in favor of the motion for Taylor Bureau, Judge Van Wick, and Edward Gaines to join the five appointments that we've already made, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent, it passes 5-0. So real quickly, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Can you please update us where we are on the demographics of the board? We're all trying to figure this out individually. Let's make sure that we're on the same page.
Mayor, first I'll just read off all eight names that you've identified thus far, either individually or these three, and then I will give you the tally that I have as you requested. Barry Monroe, Rashad Mujahid, Luther Lee, Tom Napier, Nia Hubbard, Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wick, and Ed Gaines. And those eight would give one, two, three, four black and four white. It would be one, two, three, four, five male and three female. Leaving you with one, one seat remaining to be selected from the nominated or sponsored civic groups.
Could you read the names one more time, please?
Certainly. Barry Monroe, Rashad Mujahid... Barry Monroe, Rashad Mujahid, Luther Lee, Tom Napier, Nia Hubbard, Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wyk, and Edward Gaines.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Williams-Cox, I had you first, and then coming back to Commissioner Richardson.
I would like to nominate Ms. Rosetta Bobo.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Rosetta Bobo.
Ms. Rosetta Bolo. There is a motion on the table for Ms. Rosetta Bolo. Is there a second to the motion?
Point of order. Are we only taking nominations for people nominated by civic groups?
Yeah, I thought that... I was trying to look for her name. Is she on the civic group list?
Here is what has happened, though. That may have been... That's how I entered this. But Barry Monroe, for example, was a civic group, but he was appointed as an individual. So we came... We kind of look like we kind of changed that. But to make this a balanced group is the reason I nominated Ms. Rosetta Bobo, because she is a black female. And right now, we only have one black female.
All right. We're still on the point of order. We'll come back to you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Clerk or Madam Attorney, just for clarification, and I'm not objecting right now, I'm just asking, with what we've laid out so far, is it acceptable for us to pick somebody else from the list?
You just need to make sure that you have four that are from a nomination from a civic organization. You may want to go back to the individuals, perhaps, who would, if they are on both lists, and make one of those a individual appointment. So you'll have the... You'll get the numbers you need in the...
I would be willing. I don't know what the process would be.
Hold on, just a second. Just a second, Commissioner Porter. State that one more time.
So if you have someone who is on, who has been nominated as an individual, who would also qualify as a person nominated by a civic group, you may want to make that person on the individual list. So you have the same, the proper balance. Because you need four nominated by civic and five from each of your individual appointments. So perhaps one of you could change your individual appointment to get the appropriate balance.
Okay. Back on the point of order, Mr. Mayor Protem. Not debate, just point of order. Okay. Before we get into discussion, is there a second to the motion on the table?
Second for discussion.
Okay. It has now formally been seconded, and I should ask you, please, Commissioner Williams-Cox, if you will repeat the motion, the individual's name.
My motion was to nominate Rosetta, Ms. Rosetta Bobo.
Excellent. Commissioner Porter.
I don't know what the process would look like, but I am willing to make my appointment, Ms. Rosetta Bobo, if we want to vote on Barry Monroe as another civic group appointment.
And herein, it all comes together. How about that?
Oh, like a Mr. Porter.
So put us in the proper posture, Madam Attorney, of how we would need to do that. Or can we just move forward with the motion on the table?
Perhaps you should withdraw, have a withdrawal of the motion on the table, so that you can go back and let the Commissioner withdraw her previous...
Withdraw the motion.
Yes.
Do we have to make a motion to rescind? Or... Because it passed 5-0. No, it wasn't even a motion. It was just a direct appointment.
Yes.
Okay. So withdraw her appointment, make a new appointment.
Yes.
And then I'm coming back to Commissioner Williams-Cox for a motion for Barry Monroe.
Correct.
Okay? So the motion on the table right now has formally been pulled, correct?
Absolutely, withdrawn.
Excellent. All right. Commissioner Porter, we'll come back to you for a new appointment.
I would like to rescind my appointment of Barry Monroe and appoint Ms. Rosetta Bobo.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you. Coming to you, Commissioner Williams-Cox. Coming to you, Commissioner Williams-Cox, for a motion?
I make the motion that Barry Monroe would be nominated to this board.
Second.
Been properly seconded. Any discussion on Mr. Monroe's nomination, seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously 5-0. For the record, Mr. Clerk, will you read the final list of the first participants in our review board?
I have no idea. I'm kidding. I'll be glad to. Commissioner Porter's appointee, Rosetta Bobo. Commissioner Richardson's appointee, Rashad Mujahid. Mayor Protem Matlow's appointee, Luther Lee. Mayor Daley's appointee, Tom Napier. Commissioner Williams-Cox's appointee, Nia Hubbard. And from the social or civic organizations, there are four individuals. Those are Taylor Bureau, Suzanne Van Wyk, Edward Gaines, and Barry Monroe.
Excellent. I think that is a wonderful board. And thank each and every one of you for working with each other. I hope you're as pleased as I am. Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
Don't we... Do we have one more?
No, it was nine.
That was... That was...
Okay, okay. No, you're right.
Yes, sir.
My bad. You're right.
Nope, that's okay. Any other questions on this item before we move on? Okay. We're on item number 11.02. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1102 is appointments to your Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. This committee has 11 seats. The item recommends your approval of six individuals to fill seats, either that have just expired at the end of last month or where there was an opening. And if you approve staff recommendation, they'll have a full committee and be able to move forward with meetings here in the very near future.
Do we have any speakers on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's move forward. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Mr. Mayor, I move that staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 11.03. Mr. Clerk.
Item 11.03 is your environmental board appointments. There are two individuals recommended for appointment, Katie Britt-Williams and Kevin Jones, to seats 1 and 2. Those are presented with a recommendation for your approval.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir. We do not.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Protem. Any further discussion? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 11.04. Mr. Clerk.
Getting easier as we go, Mayor. This is municipal code enforcement board. There's only a single individual to be appointed to this one. Staff recommends your approval of Sandy Leach to fill this vacancy.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
First, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Mayor Protem properly moves staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seen no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0. We are on item number 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is introduction of ordinance number 12... I'm sorry. 21-0-05, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, contracting the boundaries of the Canopy Community Development District, providing for all other terms and conditions to remain unchanged, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-0-05, and set the first and only public hearing for February 24, 2021, in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Do we have any speakers on item 12.01, Mr. Clerk?
No speakers.
Okay. Ms. Jackson, you put a recommended action in there for option 1. Is there a motion on the table?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Seen no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 12.02.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.02, introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-01, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, amending the Wildwood Presbyterian Church Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-Z-01, and set the first and only public hearing for February 24, 2021, in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no speakers.
Okay. Looking for a motion for the city attorney, option number 1.
Move staff recommendation, option number 1.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are now on item 13.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners.
I think we have another introduction.
12.
Do we... Oh, I thought we just did 12.03. I apologize. I got ahead of myself. 12.03, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.03 is introduction of ordinance number 21-Z-02, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as and in urban pedestrian District 2, UP-2, on the official zoning map, providing for conflicts and severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 21-Z-02, and set the first and only public hearing for February 24, 2021, in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Looking for a motion. Commissioner Williams-Cox properly moves staff recommendations, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Before we move into policy formation, we're coming to you for 1301. Mr. Manager, let me remind you, colleagues, we do have a public hearing scheduled for 5 o'clock. We will, of course, move forward with policy formation as close as we can get to a clean break, and then we'll go into the public hearing, only to come back and finish the business that we have afterwards. Okay? 13.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 1301 is an update from the Midtown Working Group. The City Commission previously instructed staff to work with the Midtown Working Group. It's formed by stakeholders in and around the Midtown area to share their thoughts and general recommendations about the direction of Midtown. The staff has worked with that group for now more than a year, and frankly, the report has been ready for some time. COVID got in the way, like it has so many things. So the group has been very patiently waiting to present to you today. And so numerous members of the working group are here, and you're going to hear from them. I'd like Laurel Harbin, who is a senior planner in our planning department, that is the project manager for this effort, to introduce the group and start the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm pleased to be here along with some of our working group members to present this Midtown update. I will highlight the working group and the consensus items, and then queue up the four recommendations from the group, and then I'll invite the people who are here tonight to come up and speak for themselves about the recommendations. So for background, the working group originated in 2010. It's made up of an equal number of neighborhood representatives and Midtown merchant commercial property owner representatives. The working group worked on planning and parking issues, but another piece of this was building consensus among working group members. And I'm pleased to say that we do have some consensus items that we'll be presenting tonight. I'd refer you to your agenda item. Attachment 3 includes a summary of the meetings that were held. This summarizes it, leading up to December 9, 2019, where the working group determined the four recommendations that they narrowed it down to, and later determined a proposed scope of services for consultant study that are also in your packet. So consensus items, starting with an agreement that parking continued to be an issue for Midtown merchants. Everyone agreed that it wasn't just about cars, that pedestrian comfort and safety were also an issue, leading to the need for a parking and mobility plan. That's one of the four specific recommendations that came from the group. So for starters, they wanted to explore alternative parking options. Instead of adding additional spaces, they request that you look at spaces that are currently available on privately owned lots by setting up a shared parking agreement to make those publicly available after hours when the businesses are closed. They also request a consultant do a parking study and mobility plan. Again, the agreed upon scope of services is within the agenda packet. Thirdly, the group initially requested that the city pursue acquisition of Thomasville Road between Monroe and 7th Avenue. After that recommendation came out, we met with the CRTPA to review their progress on the Midtown plan. And it looks like if the CRTPA project proceeds in that direction, then the acquisition won't be necessary. And then finally, include the working group and discussions about the future of the TPD headquarters site on 7th Avenue. So at this point, I want to invite the Midtown Working Group members who are present to speak. You already heard from one of our merchant members, Don Corrello, the owner of Waterworks. I don't think he'd be upset if I told you that he had to leave because they have a Wednesday night fried chicken special. He presented at the beginning of the meeting. In alphabetical order, I'm going to go next to another merchant member. Katie Hagerty joined our group, and she's the owner of Quarter Moon Imports.
So as Laurel introduced me, I'm Katie Hagerty. I own Quarter Moon Imports. We're on Lake Ella. I've been a part of the working group, working with other businesses and residents for a little over a year now. And I have a few points that I'd like to stress about what Laurel was just talking about. The vitality of the Midtown area affects all businesses in that locale. So when one business or area struggles, we all feel the effect. The area on Thomasville Road has faced plenty of struggles, especially now because of the pandemic, but mostly like parking and planning. And as a group, we've discussed how to plan for sustainable growth for the business sector on Thomasville Road. Mostly, we've talked about at the start of Monroe Street to Benton Road, and the solutions for the parking problems there. I'm sure you guys have all looked at our recommendations thoroughly. The most important, in my mind, is for us to buy, the city to buy Thomasville Road between Monroe and Benton. It would solve so many problems that we've been talking about in our group. It would make it so that it's easier for us to plan a modern, safe, and cohesive shopping and business district. As it stands, everything done on Thomasville Road has to go through FDOT. So even the nice features like the gas street lamps that are on 5th Avenue, we haven't been able to make that cohesive on Thomasville Road. And I think all of that stuff should be able to be done at the local level for such like the local business area. We would like to request a parking and mobility study to be completed. Obviously, now that the pandemic has hit, that needs to be thought about as far as, you know, what kind of effect that's going to have on the parking issue right now. But I think in the future, we'll still come back to parking issues in that area. So all of the data that we receive from the study is more likely to have a real impact on the area if we locally own that section of road that we're actually putting our resources into studying. In the meantime, to help with the parking situation, we request that the city pursues a hold harmless or blanket liability shared parking agreement with Midtown property owners to allow existing privately owned surface lots to be made available for public use. Finally, as a group of businesses and residents who receive input, we all receive input from our neighbors, we would like to be included in the discussions about the future of the current TPD headquarters site that's on 7th Avenue. So we all want to be included in the discussions of what happens to that lot once the TPD headquarters moves. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Next, I'd like to invite the Levy Park Neighborhood Representative, Ms. Carrie Litherland.
Good afternoon. It's nice to see you guys. I submitted my written comments yesterday at noon, and I hope that you guys had time to review them. I do believe that all of those 10 things that I laid out, or whichever ones you guys decide to do, need to be included in a final motion for clarity. As it states in the report and in my comments, I support moving forward with urgency to I support moving forward with urgency to complete a parking and mobility study so that we, the Midtown Working Group, can use that data to come up with solutions outside of that hold harmless agreement that we've recommended. However, I do believe that this should not be done in lieu of a master plan, and I do believe that one does not need to proceed before the other. They can both happen at the same time. Since you received my written comments and they are on the record, I don't feel like I need to read them all out to you guys today. So instead, I'd like to just further address moving forward that Midtown master plan piece. Last night, I spent some time reviewing the February twenty nineteen meeting to make sure that I fully understood kind of the origins of this conversation in of our group. To me, it seems that the intention of the motion made that night just hasn't come to fruition completely. This is why I implore you tonight to be very, very specific in your motions and include exactly what you wish to happen, leaving no wiggle room for interpretation. It is my understanding, and after reviewing the tape of the City Commission meeting, it was confirmed that you guys unanimously moved that staff work on moving forward with a Midtown master plan separately from coming up with parking strategies, giving both weight to move forward. You gave the directive in twenty nineteen to proceed with the comprehensive master plan, and I trust that you guys as seasoned commissioners understand the technical meaning of a Midtown master plan. And while I'm not a planning professional, I also believe that I understand the technical meaning of a master plan. And so when I ask for a master plan, I want to be very clear that I'm not asking for a revision of an action plan or a neighborhood kind of plan like that. I want a full planning master plan. Mr. Mayor, two years ago, you were the champion of the night. You provided forethought and innovative thinking beyond the issue at hand that night, which was parking. You saw the unique opportunity for a full master plan for the area. You were on point when you said since 2011, so much had happened. And if I can add to those comments in twenty nineteen, so, so, so much more has happened. Beyond Covid nineteen and the extraordinary effects it's had on our businesses and in our city, the CRTPA blueprint have approved substantial amounts of money in the area, and DOT is working in their own silo as well. The TPD site is still online, and since that twenty nineteen meeting, the city did purchase the old Northwood Mall site. Mr. Mayor, you led that conversation, saying, "I am in favor of a formal master plan that considers future land use development, mass transit and parking, taking a holistic approach," end quote.
You have about twenty seconds.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll just skip through some of that, but it was, that was pretty much what was moved. It was clarified later that that was not included in the motion. The motion was amended to include specifically moving forward with a master plan. So I guess I'll just skip some. But yet, this directive in twenty nineteen, we have not seen an RFQ or RFP. The Midtown Working Group hasn't worked on one. Or even an in-house attempt at the Midtown master plan has been attempted. So I implore you to be very specific tonight and make it clear that in addition to some of these recommendations that we provided you, that a Midtown master plan must move forward as it was already approved in February of twenty nineteen and include the directive for staff to work with the Midtown Working Group to determine the language and scope of that RFQ or RFP as you guys decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite a merchant and commercial property owner, Ed Murray, the owner of Manart Midtown and president of NAI Telcor.
Hi, guys. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I'm Ed Murray. I live at twenty-five hundred Harriman Circle. I have lived in Midtown, started my business and owned property in Midtown since nineteen eighty-four. I love Midtown. That's everything I've ever been. I'm fortunate I've been working on the Working Group Committee since July of 2010. We've been meeting a long time. We didn't meet for a few years, and then we got called back in to start meeting. It's a diverse group. You see that. It's property owners, it's business owners, it's neighborhoods. We didn't agree on everything by any means, but I became, I think we became friends, and we worked on things together. What we did agree on made the sheet that Laurel and Devin are recommending. And they are great staff members for you guys. You should be proud to have them. They represent you guys well. That's what we approved. We didn't approve a master plan. We didn't discuss a master plan. We approved the things on there. And again, there were a lot of things we didn't agree on. I didn't agree with them. They didn't agree with me. We had a lot of things, but what we did agree on were the things that were down. So respect the city's effort, respect our effort, and let's move this forward because I think it's critical. One, a couple of the things that are very critical. She spoke of trying to take title to the road, to Thomasville Road. I was the chairman of the Gaines Street Revitalization Committee, where I was on there, and one of the key things that was done that staff did, they negotiated the purchase, or actually, it wasn't the purchase. You negotiated a reverse deal with DOT. But the city took title to Gaines Street. I know you have a business there. None of that could have been done dealing through the mechanisms of DOT. You have to control the road yourself, and I think that's critical. And I think a blanket liability policy is also critical. We weren't promoting a garage right now. I didn't promote the first one. I'm not promoting one now. I don't know what we need. I know that we need relief in parking, and if you can figure out, if you can get your staff to figure out how to put, how to give these property owners that own parking spaces, but are scared to let people park there at night and on weekends because they're going to get sued, there has to be a way to provide blanket liability policy. We probably have a thousand parking spaces, if you look at it horizontally. They don't have to go up right now, and I've never said that. I know there's a bad rumor out there that I did, but I never said that. I want to figure out how to make them horizontally and how to make them accessible by everybody. So move ahead so we can do streets, sidewalks, lights, figure out the parking issues, and take title to the road. That's what we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite the Los Robles Neighborhood Representative, Mr. Jake Barnes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. I represent the Los Robles Neighborhood Association on the Midtown Working Group. Unfortunately, I sent, I tried to send a letter to you by email last night. I'm embarrassed by the letter with all the typographical errors and all in it, so I rewrote it today and sent another one to all of you. And I want to go over the six things that I wanted to bring to your attention. One is that the staff report is a little bit misleading because under the master plan, it talked about us recommending a parking study and mobility plan in lieu of a master plan. That is incorrect. We want the parking study, we want the mobility plan, and we want a master plan, and they need to be done as quickly as possible. And we would like to make sure that we continue to have the neighbors and the merchants involved in the process of determining the scope of those studies and plans and be involved throughout the entire process. We also support, at least I do, the transfer of the right-of-way of Thomasville Road from the Bettin Bradford intersection all the way to the Monroe-Thomasville Road intersection. And as Mr. Murray has talked about how it was done previously, and as a former secretary of DOT, I know you can do that. The city needs, I wish, would direct the city manager to go and start that process. We have an immediate parking problem. Mr. Murray referred to it, and we had asked that these agreements be worked out with the private property owners. This was done, as I was told, in Greenville, South Carolina. Those of you that went on that trip, that's how they solved the parking problems up there. And we think that same type of agreement can be utilized here to solve the problem, and that's something that can be done immediately. I know that the Covid nineteen has caused us some delays in our meetings. Obviously, you deal with it on a daily basis, and we fully appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that there are other priorities in this community that you want to address, and we may not be number one, but I just hope we're high enough that we can see some movement on it and get these things going because with the relocation of the police department and the activities you propose at Northward Mall, they're going to impact this Midtown area for, you know, for the future. And we need to make sure that we're all on the same page. My last two requests are, I'm not sure how it happened, but this committee can only function if we have a unanimous vote. That makes it extremely difficult, even when we have disagreements with a couple folks. I would want to, I don't know the process because I don't know how the rule came about, but I would want to suggest that we simply use a super majority of seventy-five percent would be, we can make a recommendation as opposed to making it unanimous.
Here are three minutes.
And my last request is, I would like a map that delineates what the boundary of the Midtown area is because I have yet to see such a map, and I want to make sure that we have all the proper areas included in it so we know, everybody will know what we're talking about. And with that, I thank you very much for the time you've afforded us.
Thank you.
That concludes the presentation. Our requested action is to accept the update, and the working group members are, myself, are here to answer questions if you have.
Okay, thank you. I know we have additional public comment. So, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, I believe those are all of the speakers we have here in person. If there's someone in person who wishes to speak on thirteen oh one, I'll take that speaker card here in a moment. But we do have a number of people who are on the line and had deferred to this point of the meeting, so we'll begin taking those people via WebEx. The first of those, as they come up, will be Nina Alexander and then Kathy McGuire. As with our speakers here in person, we'd ask them to give their name and address for the record, and they will have three minutes for comments. So I'll go to Nina Alexander.
Is Alexander, are you with us? Is Alexander?
Okay, then we'll go to Kathy McGuire.
Thank you. My name is Kathy McGuire. I live at eleven oh one Pine Street. I ask to speak so that I can read a message from my friend and neighbor. So here we go. Hi, my name is John Wallace, and I live at four twelve East Georgia Street. I am the Lafayette Park Neighborhood Rep on the Midtown Working Group, but due to a family emergency, I cannot attend the meeting today, so I've asked my statement to be read for me. I support the statements of the other business and neighborhood members of the Midtown Working Group. I would like to correct the misperception that the working group agreed that a parking plan was adequate in lieu of a master plan. Rather, as a professional planner, I think it's important for us to move forward now with a master plan, as well as the parking work and the transfer of Thomasville Road if possible. We need a master plan to pull the numerous upcoming Midtown projects together, spell out our vision, prepare for the future, and create another vibrant place where Tallahasians will love to congregate. Thank you, Commissioners, for your support of the working group. I urge you to move ahead with a master plan as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good. Our next speaker will be Cecilia Shaw and then Angela Prather. So Cecilia Shaw is next. And if no connection there, then Angela Prather, who did earlier ask to speak at this time of the meeting.
My name's Angela Prather. I live at eight thirty-seven Pine Street. I appreciate everyone who has spoken to this issue. I would like to wave my time to Ms. Dinker to speak for us. I greatly appreciate, again, everybody's efforts in the direction of quality of life and walkable, bikeable space along Thomasville especially. Thank you.
Ms. Prather, it is our practice for individuals to have their three minutes, and we did hear from Ms. Dinker earlier. So if you would like to use the remaining two minutes for your remarks, you may, or we will simply note that you're in support of her earlier statements.
Thank you. I'll allow the meeting to move on.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker, and I'm not sure, we had got a connection earlier, but Ellery Sedgwick. Right. Mayor, that's the last speaker I have on item thirteen oh one, either in person or with a virtual connection.
I'm Fay Gibson. I'd ask to be deferred.
Oh, we are very sorry. Please, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you so much for hearing from me. My name is Fay Gibson, and I live at six twenty-five McDaniel Street in Lafayette Park. And I am grateful for this opportunity to talk to you as Mr. Mayor and also for the Commissioners. I wanted to particularly address the area that very often, we talk about the problems in a city, and we know that there's certainly a great number of those that come to your attention. But those of us who live in Midtown offer a tremendous asset to the city as well. I think that we like the recognition of the fact that our neighborhood has eight hundred households. We are a very active group. We have been for the twenty years that I've been living here. And we are really asking that what was discussed last February come to pass is that there be a master plan. The issues that have been addressed, that are parking issues, are important. The relationship with our merchants is extremely important. But we also have a great need to have an overall comprehensive plan, not something that is just a stopgap, and we'd appreciate that being done. Again, Lafayette Park, Los Robles, we have an active downtown. When you go into so many major cities, the downtown is dead, and our downtown is not dead. It's vital, and a lot of the reason that it has that vitality is because of those of us who are residences in the Midtown and the downtown area. So we just appreciate that consideration. Thank you for everything y'all have done. You've been very supportive of our neighborhoods, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Okay, do we have anybody else that has joined us that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, let's move forward with the commission discussion. I'm opening up the floor. Do we have a motion for staff recommendation?
I'd move staff recommendation for discussion, Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion? I will second the motion. Let's go into comment. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I, I'm wondering if there is a way that we can include some of the recommendations that were made by some of the neighborhoods as well, including, you know, something more robust, such as a master plan. I want to move forward with the parking and mobility study. I think everyone agrees with that. I know there's going to be complications because of Covid, and I don't know how we're going to resolve that in the immediate future as far as measuring the traffic. But I would like to see something more comprehensive moving forward. I do believe that that is something that has been expressed by this body in the past, and I want to honor those wishes by the neighborhood groups who've spoken tonight.
Great, thank you. Well, I will jump in and comment. Well, go ahead. Mayor, pretend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with most of the recommendations. I think a shared parking agreement could have tremendous benefit in that area and pretty immediately. I probably will never support a city-funded parking garage in the future. I just think it's a bad investment. I think we should be focused on more transit-oriented solutions and really looking to the future of autonomous vehicles and what's to become. And I just don't want to, those big projects take so long to pay off. I just have, always have concerns about them. So I like this solution. I think acquiring Thomasville Road, I mean, it's going to be key to really revitalize on that corridor and do what we want to do makes perfect sense and keep the Midtown Working Group involved, as well as the parking study and mobility plan. The only question I would have is, Mr. City Manager, on standing direction from the last time we had this conversation, is there already an approved motion to go ahead with a master plan?
Mr. Manager.
Commissioner and Mayor and Commissioners, staff is looking for that direction. Clear, and I would like to say this, the working group was established to give feedback and scope. Obviously, when we talk about a master plan, that could be any, I mean, that is a very, very broad continuum of effort. And that was part of the idea that that working group would help us scope that. I think you're hearing some scope today. I'm not sure I'm hearing that's part of a master plan effort, though. So we're looking for a little more clarity and a little more direction today as we move forward, if it's very discreetly as it relates to parking in these matters or if it's more broadly related to master planning. That would include land use, zoning. Clearly, master planning is a very comprehensive effort. And from my understanding, now you heard from many members of the working group, is there was a lot of discussion about the needs. They are the stakeholders in the area, and parking rose to the top of the list as a constraint. The zoning is already in place. It's zoned commercially for use and can be developed today. In addition, the properties aren't controlled by the city. So the master plan is maybe more of a vision plan than a master plan as it relates to the control of the city to be able to adjust, unless you intended to change the zoning or particular land use. And so we're looking for some direction. That's a real long answer to say, we're kind of looking for some direction with scope because we went to the working group. They started down a path. They started having conversations, and we know parking rose to the top very quickly, which is not really a master plan necessarily.
Yeah, I guess that actually raises a couple more questions. It was brought up, the boundaries of Midtown and what that would entail. So when we're looking at consultant for a parking study and mobility plan, what are we, are we looking at greater Midtown? Are we looking at the Thomasville Road corridor? Are we looking at North Monroe? Are we looking all the way to Northwood Mall? Do we have clarity on what the scope of that study is going to entail?
Let me ask for some help from Laurel. I think she can help. We have boundaries and definitions, but like most areas, where it's downtown, Midtown, it's a great question, right? So how do you articulate that? Laurel, help me articulate the boundaries.
I think there are two boundaries. One is greater Midtown, and the Midtown Working Group agreed upon those boundaries at the May twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen meeting. We have a map that kind of outlines where they pointed out where they wanted that to be. The other boundary would be more focused on the parking issue. And I would say we would look at what the CRTPA boundaries are so we're consistent there because a lot of these projects are going to overlap.
So the parking study we would be moving forward would be that more confined Midtown based on CRTPA?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, I guess, and then the other issue that was raised, which I think is worthy of consideration, is whether it should be a unanimous decision by a working group or a super majority. I don't know how any of those individual conversations played out in that working group, but finding unanimous consent is very difficult, as we are all aware. Is that, do they have bylaws? Is that, how is that determined?
No, it's an advisory, oh, pardon me.
Laurel, let me, that's, it's a great point, actually. It was intentionally established as a working group to have the greatest freedom to operate, but it is not subject to sunshine, public disclosure, and these matters. but it is not subject to sunshine, public disclosure, and these matters. But because it's organized that way to give them freedom, they can't really take votes. If they are organized as a committee, they can begin to take votes. It could be the majority vote, but that subjects the group to public notice and participation by the public, and that may be where we need to take the next step because you can see how challenging it is for the working group to kind of come to a consensus. Very difficult, obviously, different points of interest. At some point, you may need to vote, but they would have to be organized differently to be able to do that, and probably a committee structure would be appropriate, subject to the sunshine laws.
Yeah, what I was hearing is we should nuke the filibuster and let conversations move forward. So I mean, look, I want to hear thoughts from my colleagues. I'm open to a full master plan. I would like that idea fleshed out to see if we're talking about where additional public investments can be made or what we really want to get out of it, and I think that would be an opportune thing for the working group to come back with us and say, this is what we would hope to achieve from a master plan, and have that have at least a supermajority vote, but not necessarily unanimous consent. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams Cox.
Well, I was going to be quiet, but Commissioner Matlow, you're chair of CRTPA now, right? So you know that just a few meetings ago, we spent a lot of time looking at studies of what's going on with transportation and transportation studies and mobility studies and all of that for midtown, the Thomasville Road corridor and all of that. There are a lot of moving parts. This started with talking about a parking garage when I came to the commission. It has expanded into something that I can't recognize, and the working group don't agree. The neighborhoods don't agree with the working group, but they have members of the working group, I mean, members of the neighborhoods are with the working groups. So it's almost like, you know, a splitting of the baby again. We find ourselves in this position all the time. We always want community involvement. We want community feedback, but when they can't agree on what they want and how they want it, it comes back here for us to decide how to split the baby. But in this case, there are so many moving parts here that I don't know if all of that is being taken into consideration. I don't know if the working group has had the privilege of seeing and hearing all of this stuff that we were given from CRTPA. It's just unbelievable of, you know, all the things that are occurring there. Then there's the relocation of the police station. What's going to happen with that? So I am, for once, at a loss of words of how to direct because, one, I want the neighbors to have what they want, but we also got to make sure that the businesses have what they want and need because we need them to work together. And I just think that if I had to make a decision, if somebody put a gun to my head and made me make a decision, I'd pitch it right back to them to say, work some more, talk some more, come to some better agreement, look at what CRTPA is doing and others, blueprint and others in that area, make sure it's a part of your conversation, and then come together with a plausible solution, that negotiation where the neighbors get something, some of the things they want, and the businesses get some of the things that they want. So that's kind of where I am. I don't want to decide how neighbors and businesses are going to get along in midtown. I want them to decide how you're going to get along in midtown.
Commissioner Porter.
I think my understanding was that there wasn't necessarily a conflict between what the neighborhood representatives and the working group and the merchants would like. It's more an issue of, you know, the language of "in lieu of," the parking study in lieu of a master plan. So it's, you know, "in addition to" is what I'm hearing. I also think that, you know, if we can look into the unanimous vote and instead implement a majority vote, I think that that would be helpful here, it seems. A unanimous vote, as we know, is a lot to ask. You know, I do feel like, I understand the point about that we don't, the public, you know, the city doesn't own a lot of property in midtown, but doing the zoning and land use and all, that's what local government does. That is one of our primary roles, and if that's something that we see, there is the neighborhood interest, which it seems overwhelming interest. I mean, literally hundreds of neighborhoods or hundreds of residents being represented by some of these neighborhood groups, and it's something that they're asking for. So I would only be comfortable moving forward with both of these, and I don't see why we couldn't, why we can't begin with the parking study and then move forward to that. I understand that there's a lot... I understand the moving parts. That's why a master plan is that much more important when there are those moving parts. I understand also the Thomasville Road. I've heard from staff that's... Could be a very complicated process and maybe unaffordable if it's, you know, whether we can acquire the portion of Thomasville Road that we want or if we need to go beyond. But I would really like to see a master plan of some sort that the neighborhood feels good about.
Mr. Murray, did you want now? If I opened it up, Mr. Murray, I got to let everybody do this all over.
I can answer some of your questions. We did get the CRTPA reviewed. They came and met with us. Most of us went to the charrettes or whatever they had. We're very involved in that. We had in-depth conversations in the relocation of the police station, where it was going, potential uses that we would guess that it could be used for. We've been pretty involved in everything, and we don't disagree with hardly anything. We agree on a lot of things. There's just a few things that we don't. A master plan, if that's the direction you're going in, that's fine. The devil's in the detail, right? Like City Manager said, you only own so many pieces, so you'll be master planning the things you own. You can consider... Your zoning code is the master plan for everything else, correct? And to look, and if the decision of the commission is to downzone, that's a dangerous path. So I don't know if that's... I'm not sure that's a path that anybody wants to go on, but you got to define what you want in the master plan, and that's all. But we agree on a lot of things, particularly that whole sheet we agree on, if a master plan.
Well, Mr. Murray. Hold on just a second. Commissioner Williams Cox, because Commissioner Porter, you were done with your comments, right? In all fairness, I'll give any other member of the working group an opportunity to comment as well if you'd like. Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say that if we don't own Thomasville Road, then it seems like to have a master plan is a little bit pointless. I don't have a problem with having a master plan, but I think that if we try to plan for something that we don't have access to, then I don't know what we're spending the resources on.
Excellent. Commissioner Williams Cox, before I come to you, Madam Attorney, we are upon the 5:00 hour with a publicly noticed public hearing. Is there anything... Instead of just cutting this short, can we wrap this out? Do we need a motion to postpone the public hearing five minutes or 10 minutes?
I think it's sufficient if you simply announce that after the completion of this item, you will begin the public hearing.
Ladies and gentlemen, you heard the city attorney. As we wrap up this item, we will go directly into the public hearing that was publicly scheduled at 5:00. Everyone that is watching on television or online or is here in person, we will go directly into the public hearing at 5:00 upon completion of this issue. Okay, Commissioner Williams Cox.
I would draw what I was going to say.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
I think we've got a...
Of course, Ms. Litterland, a member of the working group.
Just real quick about the master plan. I think it's important that it takes a holistic approach like you guys had mentioned, and if that means including the other parties, one way that we've heard that that could be done is by making it, once it comes back to you guys, taking it up as law, and that way it's really something that you would encourage the county partners, blueprint, CRTPA to look at when they're looking at this area. So I think just because we're looking at only city things doesn't mean that... And that's why you'd ask for an independent person to do this outside of city staff because they could then look beyond what you guys own and what you guys have and really give us a full master plan of the area that incorporates all of those pieces that are moving simultaneously. So that's why we encourage it that way. I also agree that really, I would hope that the scope and the, you know, if we did an RFQ/RFP comes back to us, that we can have those discussions about what we want that master plan to look like for you guys to come back.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could comment?
Yes, ma'am.
One of the items that's being recommended, I note share at parking agreements, and I just want to make sure that you are considering what the ask is, and that is that the city indemnify and hold harmless these private property owners. I think that's a matter that needs to be reviewed carefully, and it needs to be reviewed by risk management.
I would assume, and maybe incorrectly, but I would assume that that item would come back formally before the city commission or some type of ratification. I mean, obviously, we do not have anything except for the idea to move forward with. I would assume that we would find the surface lots available privately owned in midtown. We would see who was truly interested in entering into the agreement. We would draft the language. They would have to agree. We would have to agree, so that would come back to us.
Well, I was simply responding to one of the comments from the speaker that said, we want you to pass exactly what you're going to do.
Oh, okay. Yes, ma'am.
So I want to make sure that there's clarity on that.
Understood. Yes, ma'am.
I did have an opportunity to look at some of the other agreements in other jurisdictions, and I did not find one where cities assume the liability. So certainly, if there is something that we can review, glad to review that, but what I saw was not that cities assumed the liability.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. First of all, this has been going on a long time, so, you know, it just didn't start yesterday, and the work group has been in place for a long time, and they've done tremendous work and gotten us to where we are today with these recommendations. I don't think that, and maybe I have the advantage of having been here for a while and been a part of CRTPA and the city commission and looking at what DOT is doing, and they haven't been done in isolation or in silos. There has been, what would I call it, collective working together of all of these different entities. There has not been a sole master plan, but there has not been, all of these plans developed in isolation of each other. I can tell you that. That has not been the case, and there has been lots of involvement in that. I don't see where the two are mutually exclusive. I think if we wanted to move forward on... Because I understand from the business community that we, that parking issue is crucial for them. I understand that, and if we can move forward on addressing that and the mobility, well, of course, we could include them in the discussion about the future of the TPD headquarters on Seventh Avenue, but we can move forward with those things as we continue to discuss what the scope of a master plan would be. And so that's where I see us at this point. We can give the staff direction to continue with the working group recommendations, taking into consideration what the attorney has given us in that regard. I wouldn't support the city being liable, and so I don't know what that does to that agreement, but I could not support us assuming liability if something happens in those private parking lots. It just, I don't think would be the appropriate thing to do. But I don't see both of these being mutually exclusive. I see one as being more short-term than the other, and so that would be my suggestion, Mr. Mayor, is that we move forward with what we can in terms of the working group recommendations, and then direct staff to work with the working group and other interested parties in how we can move forward with a more long-term master plan.
Well said. Well, I seconded your motion. Commissioner Matlow, excuse me, Mayor Pretten Matlow.
Thank you. Yeah, I concur, and I agree. I think the parking agreement should come back if that's captured in the motion, and I mean, I think the thing, maybe what, exactly what you're saying, but just kick the master plan idea back to the working group, have them come up with a scope, bring that back to us with a supermajority of the board agreeing that that's a scope they want to see, and then we vote on approving it.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I guess the other question that I would have for the commission, if it's our prerogative, is what the city manager talked about in terms of reorganizing the work group and making them a committee so it only requires a supermajority vote. I think that anyone who wants to be involved, if they're organized that way and people want to attend meetings and it's in the sunshine and there's transparency, then maybe that be the direction that we head. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Might I ask, I threw that out there, and the city attorney and I had not talked about it, but I believe if we're asking the committee to take votes, I'm sorry, the working group to take votes, I do believe they need to be organized as a committee. I'm going to look to the city attorney to tell me I'm right or wrong on this one.
Well, I think I would certainly recommend that they be a committee that's formally established, that you've made appointments to, so that you could have that kind of openness and making sure also that you have the ability to have those votes taken and counted in a public and transparent way.
So Commissioner Richardson, would you be willing to amend your original motion, which I would be more than happy to continue to second, for the addendum of the staff recommendation to formally transform the working group into a formal citizens advisory committee?
Yes, I would.
Great, okay, and I will second that. Commissioner Williams Cox.
I guess, two things real quick. The working group recommendation with the acquire Thomasville Road between Monroe Street and Baton Road from FDOT, what does that mean?
Mr. Mayor, I think Commissioner Williams Cox, it makes a perfect point, and I think we all understand that's very direct language. That probably is too direct of language. I think if I'm asking you to give us direction, it would be to explore it and provide an update to the commission as opposed to directing us to acquire Thomasville Road. Sure. Yeah, because I had some questions about that as well, and I think what Ed mentioned earlier in terms of the agreements that were made to acquire Gaines Street is maybe an option for us, if that exists.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Williams Cox, I apologize. You do have before.
And my second question is, I don't oppose creating a committee, but are we going to create a committee for every area of town of people who are going to come together and want to do what this midtown working group is doing? Are we going to have, you know, I don't know, it's not on the top of my mind, are we going to have a Southside Advisory Committee? Are we going to have a Westside Advisory Committee? I'm just asking because we're going to set a precedence here, and we're going to have to keep it going.
I agree, and I think we should always be cautious of the precedent that we set. In this particular... And I don't have an answer for you about the other parts of town, but because we do have the working group already established, in my mind, this more formalizes the group into our committee structure.
Okay, I just want to... I don't disapprove, in fact, whatever we need to move forward, but I just want to make sure we are paying attention to what we're doing.
Sure, sure. Okay, seeing no further comments. The motion on tables for staff recommendation with the additional recommendation from the city manager and the city attorney, formalize the working group into a citizens advisory committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Folks, I tell you what, let's do take a five-minute recess. We'll come back at 5:15. We stand in recess. We will reconvene into the scheduled public hearing. We do have a majority. Ladies and gentlemen, we're on item number 15.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 15.01, the first of two public hearings on ordinance number 20-0-28. The second public hearing will be held on February 24, 2021. An ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 10 zoning of the Tallahassee Land Development Code to add Section 10-181 Neighborhood Boundary 1 Zoning District to Division 1. Division 1. Amending permitted uses, maximum gross square footage, and minimum development standards to add Section 10-272 NB1 Neighborhood Boundary District to Division 3. Amending Division 4 Downtown Overlay Regulating Plan and Multimodal Transportation District Standards of the Tallahassee Land Development Code to add NB-1 to Transect 3, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the first of two public hearings on ordinance number 20-0-28, and set the second and final public hearing for February 24, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Do we have anybody here that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Looking to direction for my colleagues. Staff recommendation is properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We're on item number 15.02.
Thank you. Item number 15.02, first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-46. An ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6-62 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code relating to flood elevations, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, conduct the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-46 and adopt the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
No, sir.
Do we have anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Move Option 1.
Second. Is properly moved by the Mayor Potem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Those are the two items that are listed under the public hearing. Do we have any other items come before us under the scheduled public hearing?
No further public hearings.
All right. I'd like to adjourn the public hearing, reconvene the business meeting. We are now on item number 13.02. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Item 1302 is seeking your approval to grant permits for select cosponsored springtime events subject to the approval of COVID-19 mitigation plans. At your annual retreat a couple weeks ago, this was discussed in depth, and the discussion was that the commission wanted to review and approve the plans that were submitted, that would be submitted by these select events. It has been added to your agenda, and plans have been reviewed and approved by staff across committee of staff, with Parks and Recreation staff, Safety Office staff, Risk Management staff, as well as police and fire. Those plans are for Word of South, Red Hills Horse Trials, Lemoine Arts Festival, and the Southern Shakespeare Festival. Ashley Edwards is our point, our Director of Parks and Recreation on this. She is available via WebEx, and I'd like her to share a few comments, and I know we have a number of speakers registered for this as well.
Excellent. Ms. Edwards, it's great to see you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As the manager said, we convene a committee to review the plans that were submitted, focusing on the issues that we discussed previously with you at the retreat, the size of crowds, how we would manage those crowds, limit those crowds, how would we allow for social distancing, both in the layout of the event and within the participants at the event, requiring masks and ensuring that sanitation protocols were in place. For the Red Hills Horse Trials, which is scheduled to be held March 11 through the 14th, they are actually requesting no spectators. They would have a very limited number of sponsors, very socially distant in separate tents, and they will be following guidelines that are well-established by the United States Equestrian Federation. They have a COVID action plan for all USEF licensed competitions. They have been running throughout the summer and fall, and it's that their plan has held up very well. With Southern Shakespeare event to be held May 6 through the 9th, they would limit their capacity just to the size of the amphitheater crowd that we have established as being able to be socially distanced, which is 792 people that could fit in the amphitheater and remain socially distant. There would be a free ticket that would be required, but people would have to get a ticket, and there would be staggered entry times as well as multiple specified entry points that people would have to follow. And they would also limit dressing room access for their performers and drastically reduce the number of their entourage that would be in that dressing room area. For Word of South, which would be held April 10 through 11, they would limit the capacity of the event to 1,000 people each day. Again, free tickets would be required. They would have staggered entry times and specified multiple entry points. And then the access numbers around each of the stage areas at Cascades Park during this event would also be limited to allow for social distancing. The Chain of Parks Art Festival, held April 17 through 18, would also manage the same capacity with 1,000 people at any one time during, throughout the festival. They've reduced the number of artists that they would have, and they've also added additional space to the footprint of the venue to allow for appropriate social distancing between all the booths. They also would have staggered entry times and specified multiple entry points and would require a free ticket as well. They've also designated traffic foot patterns around that festival area to help with social distancing. We do have representatives from these events here today that are happy to also answer any questions that you have, and I, of course, am happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have on this item?
Mayor, we have one individual here in chambers, and then we have seven who have connected and asked to speak at this point of the meeting when we asked them earlier.
Wonderful.
All right. Our first speaker will take the one who's in person. That's Gina Wurst-Jager. And as with the other parts of our meeting, we'll ask speakers to give their name and address for the record, and then have three minutes for comment.
Hello, Ms. Jager. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Name and address.
Gina Wurst-Jager, Isle of Palm, 3024th Avenue, Isle of Palm, South Carolina. I am a board member of Red Hills Horse Trials. I grew up here. Ashley and Jane, and Jane and Tom are on, if you guys have questions, but basically we have a COVID plan in place that Ashley, what she said, has been dictated by the USA, which is a national organization, and we have unfortunately had to remove spectators from the event, which is the bulk of our event for this year. But we are up against also losing our date and never being able to run Red Hills again if we don't run this year because of international and national calendar use. So what we've come up with has also, in the sort of way, weird way COVID has does things, if we do it this way, we will be able to initiate live streaming of the event, which could potentially open it up to a much broader audience outside of Tallahassee, but for Tallahassee. So we think that would be a really, one good benefit of this sort of COVID situation. And again, we have lots and lots of details on this, and Jane and Tom have lots and lots of details on this, and we hope to continue Red Hills as an event, and the only way we really can is to run this year. For me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk.
We'll move to the individual who's connected virtually with us. The first of those will be Mark Mushton, and then we'll have Chris Powell. So we'll ask Mark Mushton if he's still there.
Former Congressman Mushton, are you with us?
I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes, sir. Thanks for joining us.
Sure. Well, I just want to thank the city for, you know, your past and current support for Word of South. I mean, we've been at this for seven-plus years now. It's been a lot of work and a lot of success, and we've had, you know, we're a regional and national audience and following, and very proud for what we've put together. We've weathered the construction of the park. We've weathered the weather, and now we've got COVID. And so, as you know, we were forced to cancel last year's festival about three weeks before the festival. And I think we've managed to survive that okay financially and otherwise, but as with some of the other entities that are going to talk to tonight, I think a two-year absence really puts us, you know, without exaggerating, puts us at a really difficult position of continuing on at all. It just really, it would be a body blow to us. So we're wanting to do the festival sort of any way we can, and we're very thankful to Ashley and the staff who've worked closely with us to try and make this a safe event for, in a COVID, you know, social distancing situation. So we have a very detailed plan that the staff has approved. The festival will look very different. It's not open to everybody. You have to have a ticket, still free, but there'll just be a lot less people and a lot more social distancing. But I think we can do it in a safe way, and as I mentioned, it's very important to us to survive to be able to do it. We are going to do, try and do a few of the events virtually as well as in person, but I feel pretty optimistic that we can, that we can make this work. As was mentioned, and I'm sure you know and we know, I mean, if things were to get worse, we understand that you reserve the right to pull the plug at any point, and that's what we operate under. But thank you for your consideration. I really think we can make this work in a great fashion. I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Chris Powell, and then Jane Barron. So we'll take Chris Powell next.
Hi there. My name's actually Powell Crease, just for the record. Address 1214 Clark Avenue. I'm representing Lemoine's Chain of Parks Art Festival. Thank you for having us today. I know this is a big decision that will impact our community, but I have to implore you, like Mr. Mushton, to please allow us to have spring events with COVID safety protocols. We've been working closely with the city to make sure that our festival is radically adjusted to what you might envision from previous years with significant attendance reductions, spacing out, a free-ticketed wristband system, directional walk paths. We're really trying to reshape this. Instead of being a family fun activity, it'll be more for the serious art buyers and patrons. This is an opportunity for our artists to save their livelihood, to be frank. We've reduced and eliminated any main gathering areas. We're not going to have our evening grove or our children's parks set up. So we've put a lot of effort into adjusting, and we really hope that you'll consider allowing us to have this festival. It is an outdoor festival, and we think we can really do this safely and help support our artists, like Mr. Mushton was saying, without having the continuity of the festival. I genuinely don't know how we will maintain sponsorship and volunteers and artists' faith and all of that. So just any support we can get from you guys would be great. Thank you for your time, and please consider.
Thank you.
Jane Barron?
Ms. Barron, are you with us?
I am here. Thank you. And I think we are in lockstep with the other speakers today. We're all fighting for our survival and also trying to provide a service for people who have really felt the impact of being cooked up and unable to get out and enjoy what Tallahassee has to offer. I think each of the spring entities has worked extremely hard to modify our events so that we could offer a safe, if radically different, event than we normally offer. And I'm here basically to answer questions of any of the commissioners, and we really appreciate the support and the encouragement that city staff has given us in trying to keep these events going. So thank you for our opportunities to communicate with you, both by email and text messages and the opportunity to be here to speak. And as for all the others, we ask you please to consider letting us work very hard to hold these events in a very safe manner this spring. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Next is Tom Barron, and then Elizabeth Emanuel.
Mr. Barron? Mr. Barron, are you with us? Come back to Mr. Barron. Let's go to Ms. Emanuel.
Hello, Commissioners. Elizabeth Emanuel, 300 West Pensacola. Commissioners, thank you for your leadership during trying times. It seems each meeting is met with difficult decisions to protect the safety and the well-being of our community while encouraging economic development and community unity. Today, I wanted to speak in support of the proposed outdoor events on behalf of downtown. As I mentioned in my written comments, these events bring much-needed foot traffic into our downtown. The foot traffic brought in is incredibly helpful to restaurants, hotels, and offices in the area. It allows us to showcase our well-suited outdoor infrastructure with our beautiful public parks and amphitheaters, contributes greatly to economic development with nearly 1,000 downtown hotel rooms, generates business for over 30 restaurants in the area. In a time when graduations have gone virtual, football games have been canceled, and the Capitol museums are mostly closed to the public, downtown hospitality and hotels depend upon these events. As you have heard, events like Lemoine and Word of South have spent countless hours creating a safety plan for our community. They're reducing capacity, volume, and attendees. With guidance from Parks and Rec, each event now looks different than before with important new protocols, attendee registration software, increased volunteers, less vendors. Unfortunately, this reduces revenue for these events, and it does create a much larger overhead, but it ensures that safety comes first. I've had the opportunity to speak with both Lemoine and Word of South organizers, and I'm impressed with their safety plans, procedures, and their resiliency, along with how well they've worked with the city's Parks and Rec, who have done a tremendous amount of work themselves. The benefit these events bring to downtown and to all of our community is immense, as they bring foot traffic, economic development, positive headlines, and a safe way for our community to come together. Dr. Fauci stated in recent remarks that outdoor events are the safest type of events, and along with that, they highlight the importance of live cultural events for community help. In our own community, we have seen outdoor events with increased safety measures the safest way to bring our community together, events like sports, with large credit due to the director, Ashley, and the staff of Parks and Rec, who have displayed excellent leadership and external communication. We hope that arts and cultural events that mean so much to the people of Tallahassee can be granted the permission they need to safely bring our community together in every sense. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker, Mayor and Commissioners, is Pam Duffek.
Pam Duffek.
Thank you. I'm Pam Duffek. I live at 9320 Royal Troon Drive. As immediate past Board President and continuing Board Member for Lemoine Arts, I've seen firsthand the community and financial impact of our community's cancellation of 2020 public events, especially those in the arts. Lemoine's Chain of Parks Art Festival was one of them. This spring, Lemoine and several other organizations have the opportunity to present key community events. Commissioners, I support that you permit Chain of Parks Art Festival and its supporting events that will take place the week of April 9 to the 18, with a community festival on Saturday and Sunday, April 17 and 18. The COVID Responsible Plan presented by Festival Chairman Doseur and Festival Manager Crease and their committee is well-thought-out, incorporates all CDC guidelines, is flexible and well-spread out. The entire plan is outlined on the Chain of Parks website, chainofparks.org. It allows for a changing health environment while maximizing community attendance, as well as supporting the artists involved. This still-free event has adjusted how people will move through the festival, how food is available and served, as well as enhanced safe events for children. This is a win-win-win for Tallahassee, regional, national artists, and Lemoine. The festival's draw to regional tourism is well-documented, and revenues to hotels and businesses is unquestioned. The additional events that lead up to the festival, for example, the Zerbi Celebration, opening nights presenting artist event, and the printmaking workshops with Jim Sharaden all provide safe, in-person, and virtual options. These events place the safety of our community foremost, and I believe the Chain of Parks plan should be accepted, the festival supported, and allowed to occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker, Laura Johnson.
Johnson.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is Laura Johnson at 6228 Buck Run Circle, representing Southern Shakespeare Company. And thank you, Mayor Daley, and the members of the commission for the opportunity to be here with you today on behalf of Southern Shakespeare and our upcoming May 2021 Free Shakespeare at Cascades Park. Like many have spoken here about arts and culture throughout the pandemic, have provided respite and nourishment with countless arts organizations, including Southern Shakespeare Company, finding ways to adapt to what's become a most virtual world. But we know that there's nothing like live music, as Word of South is represented here, like art, like Lemoine Chain of Parks represented here, or like live theater, like Southern Shakespeare brings to our Free Shakespeare in the Park every year. Arts and culture are interwoven in our community's sense of identity, connectedness. are interwoven in our community's sense of identity, connectedness, and the ability to bounce back after hardships, conflicts, and the devastation brought on about by things like the COVID pandemic. Southern Shakespeare has sought ways to bring live theater to Tallahassee and beyond safely, and following the strictest policies and procedures for COVID safety measures. Ahead of Southern Shakespeare's Free Shakespeare in the Park in, in May, we have worked to follow CDC guidelines for events and gatherings. Our organizations established COVID Safety Committee, has been meeting with the city regularly. Ashley Edwards and the staff at City Parks have been utterly amazing and wonderful to help us to determine best practices for our May festival event, adhering to their recommendations and requirements throughout, to limit capacity of attendance, crowd control, barriers with monitored controlled entry points, as Ms. Edwards was referring to, implementing mask requirements, ensuring adequate hand sanitizing stations, eliminating food truck vendors. In other words, our festival this year is going to look very different from those in years past for all the reasons it should. We're trying to find some normalcy in this, well, this new normal for all of us. And within this constantly shifting landscape, I ask you to recognize Southern Shakespeare Company's continued commitment to developing and modifying these guidelines, using the strictest guidelines and always in keeping with the recommendations and requirements set forth by the city. It is the safety of our staff, cast, crew, volunteers, audiences, and community that matter most. We want to be able to bring live theater again with your continued support. Losing our festival last year, as with other festivals, was absolutely painful. Losing the opportunity in 2021 would be devastating to our organization and have long-lasting effects, as we know what large events such as ours means to a recovering community and its economic and cultural ecosystem. I just wanted to say thank you all so much for your continued support for Southern Shakespeare Company and for your time and consideration today. I am here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Clerk?
Mayor, there are no further speakers on this item, either in person or via WebEx, as far as I've been advised.
If I do recall, let's go try one more time for Mr. Tom Barron, who we called his name, and he was not available. Is Mr. Barron with us now?
This is Jane Barron. I'm sorry, he had another meeting and had to leave us.
No worries, no worries. Okay, thank you, Ms. Barron.
Thank you.
That wraps up our public comment. I am looking forward to moving forward and supporting these organizations, and I look forward to supporting the motion in favor of. We'll just open it up for discussion. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
Well, I was ready to make the motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. I personally want to thank each one of the organizations for going the extra step and really putting together solid plans. Yeah, it's a different year, but these are incredible festivals that mean so much to our community. And yeah, they did a great job. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I want to also applaud them and thank them for, for what they've done. It also sets up a great model for us to follow, because there are other events that we would need to consider, and one of those events is probably in a, in a CRA that we've done that we might need to take a look at. The other thing is that the Emancipation Day Celebration that occurs here in Tallahassee every year in May, we need to take a look at how we can make that happen this year, because it could not happen last year. But I want to thank these organizations for going forward and putting together these safety plans as examples in, of what we can do. Also, being creative, like our staff has been very creative in putting together the Martin Luther King Day Parade that's going to be happening on February 6th in, in a very COVID-friendly environment. So I'm looking forward to having these outlets in our community, so that people can let off a little steam or be a little calm, you know, be able to get out a little bit. And so I, I wholeheartedly support moving forward with staff recommendation.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to commend staff, Ashley and her staff, for the work that they've done, Mr. City Manager, in terms of working with these organizations to provide, you know, what we had set as direction for how these events could happen this year. And so I certainly want to commend Ashley and her staff for the work that they've done and the leadership that you've provided, Mr. City Manager. And then, secondly, I think it's, it's, I think, I know that it's important that we do have these events this year for all of the reasons that the Speaker talked about, but particularly if we did not have these events this year, they might be gone forever.
Right.
And so that's why it's important that we do move forward in some form or fashion with these events this year, and hopefully soon they'll be back to where they were in years past. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir. Another comment, Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I had a question, actually. I was going to ask Ashley, with the, with these safety plans, as we have more and more of our community receive the vaccines, I'm sure that these plans will include encouragement for participants to receive the vaccine when, when they're, when they become available, because that helps us be even safer.
Reach that herd immunity level.
Yeah. So that's a question to Ashley, that, that was, if that was included in, in these safety plans.
Mr. Manager?
Ashley, if we'll pull WebEx back up, I can probably answer it for it. Not in these safety plans necessarily. I think it's a good suggestion. We know right now only certain people can get the vaccine. I think that's a fantastic recommendation, though. And I think you've heard some of these events that we may, and so you're starting to see, maybe there is a possibility that you, we can, and we're going to talk about this later in the meeting, how we move our community forward as swiftly as possible to reach vaccinations. Ashley, do you have anything you can add to that?
No, just, I would certainly concur that as we move forward and the vaccine becomes more prevalent, I think that's absolutely an excellent component to request be included in all the plans that we review.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, first off, thank, I want to thank Director Edwards just for your, your work in shepherding these through so, so quickly. I know it's difficult. Thank you to all the event sponsors for getting your plans together. I know it's hard to reduce crowd sizes when you're really in the business of making crowds gather, and it's a difficult decision to make in how many vendors you can have and food trucks. But I, but I think there's, there's been a real earnest effort to try to protect our community. And we do know that a finish line is around the corner. There, there's a great goal for the country to do 100 million vaccines within 100 days. I want to recognize the firefighters with us today who have been helping distribute those vaccines. We definitely appreciate your service. And I didn't see anything that struck me for too much of a concern in the proposals. I did know, we, we had a brief conversation about Springtime Tallahassee. Is there an anticipation? Are they waiting to see how our parade goes, or do we know if they have a plan in the works for their event?
Ashley probably can add more details. Commissioner, and I don't want to speak for them, but I know considerations being given for the timing of the event that will create a little more flexibility. And we do expect to bring more of these to you. The four that are in front of you today needed, needed to move forward. So I expect that will come forward in some modified way. I, I think it stands to reason that they would love to see how our parade works. You know, I think that would be very informative to them in understanding that it is possible that the date changes to give them a little more flexibility.
Okay. Yeah, we are the pioneers. I, I don't know how it's going to work. I hope a lot of people will come out and, and enjoy our inaugural event. I know it's been a priority to get done, and then we got hit by a pandemic, but you know, that show will go on, and hope everybody comes out to it.
So no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table that was made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those pass. Passes unanimously, five zero. We are now on item number 13.03.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to award to four responsive bidders RFP number 112-20-FS. The contract is for temporary shelter and mobile equipment for storm events. This, this is probably simply put, this is just good staff work. We realized after Hurricane Michael, it is possible that there would not be adequate sheltering for emergency responders, utility folks that we bring in to the community. And so we're trying to create some redundancy and have these options available. There were four responsive bidders to this, and in this case, I think there's, there's a thought process that if we have an event, we've seen these events be regional, wide in scope, not limited to our community, and you have pressure on these kind of services, you want as many contractors as you can get to, to call upon at the time of those emergencies. This particular item is put forth by Rob McGarrett, General Manager of Electrifying Gas, in anticipation of meeting the needs of that, that effort.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item? Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we do not.
Any comment from my colleagues? Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had this item pulled from our last meeting, just from some concerns that were raised, and I, I just wanted to express those concerns moving forward. First off, I, I recognize the, we accepted all the vendors, and you know, the explanation that we should have as many choices as possible. The, the bottom-ranked vendor had a few concerns that were expressed during the scoring process, and one of the concerns expressed was several, a great deal of lawsuits between either municipalities that use that vendor, or the vendor actually engaging in a lawsuit against the municipality. And I know that concern was raised. So do we have any concern? I know we've worked with this vendor in the past. Do we have any concerns? Does that raise any red flags in, in the scoring committee?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, that, that was discussed in the scoring committee. It was evaluated by the department that put forth the recommendation, and ultimately it was concluded that, and that would be a different division of the company, a different service of the company. This is a relatively new effort, as I understand it. Ultimately, the department wanted to have as much flexibility, so they put forth the recommendation to include all four vendors.
Okay. A second concern that was raised that was, was about, I guess, our personal experience with this vendor and debris removal. And I don't know if there's staff that can speak to, just, just the line of communication that we had during the last storm event, and how, how we were able to work through that. Another concern that was raised was the vendor picked up debris in the county and then billed the city for it. And it was expressed in the review committee that their response was, we'll go sort that out with the county. Go get your money back from the county. And that struck me as, as not much of a professional business practice. And I don't know if there, we can elaborate on what may have happened during those, during that last storm with, with this company. I'm just, I, I just, with those two concerns raised, both numerous amounts of lawsuits and to what seemed like a difficult situation with, with our last contract with them, it just makes it difficult to support the bottom-ranked vendor.
I can address a little bit of that, just for context.
Well, for, for the purpose of disclosure, the bottom-ranked vendor is?
Oh, the, the lowest rank, because there was, this was a ranking, was Ash Britt.
That's who you're referring to?
Correct.
Say the name again, please.
Ash Britt.
Okay.
And the, the service they have provided historically, and they do this, is debris removal. So they're in emergency management. They, they, they were born out of a cottage industry that, not too much history, but after Hurricane Katrina, right? So this is now a full-blown industry. And we, we do use them, the county uses them, the city uses them, among others, for debris removal post hurricane-type event. Most recently, the, the one you're speaking of, Commissioner Matlow, it is a very, very confusing event. It's difficult to know what city and what's county at times, and they do work for both of us. There was an occasion where the county was billed for city service, and the city was billed for county service. That did happen. It went both directions. I believe that's been reconciled, but that, that did happen. The performance of this vendor, the background, I'm very confident that the department explored it. Ultimately, the department, it, it didn't believe that rendered this company unable to provide temporary shelter if we called upon them in the future. And, and they valued that capacity, the potential capacity, in wanting to have all, as many vendors as possible.
And, and just on the process on RFPs like this, when is it determined how many vendors we select, whether it should be an RFP or just a request for qualifications? Is it going to be everyone? And then, I mean, is it ever the practice of the city to look kind of for a natural break in the scorings to, to be, to choose the most reliable vendors?
Mr. Mayor, it is. To your last question, Commissioner Matlow, there's not magic to it. It totally could be you get a lot of responses. There is a natural break in scoring. That's entirely possible, and you pick based on that. So it, it depends on the responses. It depends on the need, various, based on circumstances. An RFP is ideal when you're looking at qualifications, and you want, you want to do as broad of a look for quality as possible. And it's not necessarily just a simple bid-type process. And that's what we see here. So there's some thought process that goes into whether you do a bid, you do an RFQ, you do an RFP, even if you require prequalification. We've got excellent staff to, to do that. We do a lot of these, depending upon, you know, the nature of the work. In this case, it was concluded an RFP would be the best approach. And there wasn't enough divide to where the, the department was concerned that you drew that line, because at the end of the day, I think they probably would have liked more than four, because we do realize, you know, and we've seen it, we saw it with debris removal, even during some of the hurricanes, it, it can impact the area so widely, there's not enough capacity in the industry to get the services we need. So we want as much option as we can. This is a, this is a belt-and-suspender's approach. I'll, I'll tell you that, we, hopefully, we never get into this situation, and we have adequate sheltering. But if we don't, we don't have time to figure it out in a moment. We've got to have it ready-made. And, and I did add in my intro, which is important, though, this helps us get FEMA reimbursement. If we have these pre-standing contracts, FEMA is much more likely to reimburse us for these activities. So that, that's another reason you would do that.
Okay. And, and just a final question is, in the event we have a, a storm event and need to activate some of these contracts, what, what does policy say versus which vendor we go to first? Who gets the first crack at it? Is it based on price? Is it based on score ranking?
This would be more procedure than policy, and the practice would be to go the highest rank to the lowest rank. That's, that's how they would proceed. I think the highest ranking tells you that staff had the greatest confidence in the ability to deliver the highest rank. So they'd work down the list in that order.
And that's practice, but there's not a policy stating one way or the other. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, just a lot of concern there. I don't want to be in a storm event. And then, based on just what I've heard and the communication we've had, and, and the potential for lawsuits, I'm just not, I can't, I'm not comfortable supporting that. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I was just going to say that, that seemed to be, there was a lot of concern, but apparently it was only communicated to one commissioner. So my concern is, if there are concerns, then we all need to know that, that there are concerns. And so, so that one commissioner is not, and I mean, I know when, when staff answers questions, they send it, they, they send it to us. I'm just saying, if there is a great concern, and there's some inspections that people are, are some speculations or whatever about our purchasing process, then it should not just be communicated to one commissioner. It, all of us should be, be, be made aware of, of if there's an, an issue. Because then, it, to me, it looks like you're only speaking to one commissioner, and the rest of us are in the dark unless staff shares the information with us. And today, I've heard two instances of someone questioning our purchasing process and policies. And when you start doing that, that starts eating away at credibility. It starts eating away at people thinking that something nefarious is going on, and that we're, we're not doing our due diligence. Our staff is not doing our due diligence. And I, I want, I want to make sure that no one thinks that our staff is not doing something that they should, that they're, they're following the rules and the law. We heard Ms. McCracken today tell us what she's following. Florida Statute 287 speaks clearly to what our, what the purchasing, the procurement practices are as passed by the Florida Legislature. I happen to know a little bit about that, because I used to work in that arena. So as long as- So as long as we're following those statutes, and we're also not looking at Madam Attorney, not breaking any ordinances or procedures that we have in place, I just want people to be assured that we're dealing with professionals in our procurement staff. And if by chance, there is something that may not have gone according to what you think, then let us all know, so that we're all aware of it. And then, that's how we, we can try to make it, make it better. So I just want to, want to say that, because you just listed off a laundry list of things I was not even aware of, and I'd like to be made aware if we, if we're thinking that something's not happening like it should have, should happen. So that's, that's all I want to say about that.
Yeah, and I'm going to jump in as well. Actually, I want to come in hard and thank staff and procurement, Rob McGarrett's team. Let me tell you something. If there is one thing I have learned, based on my experience over at the County Commission, having been through three hurricanes, you got to lock these contracts in early, and you got to lock the rates in early. Do you remember? It wasn't Michael, it wasn't Hermine, it was, it was, what was the hurricane that hit Reese, where you had all the communities down in South Florida that had not locked in their vendors, and they had not locked in their rates, and so?
Irma. I think it was Irma.
It was?
I believe so, yeah.
Irma?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So y'all remember, I mean, it was national news, that you had all the local governments in South Florida that did not proactively establish the contracts and, and lock them in. Therefore, what happened was, it became a Wild West situation, and the vendors were just, the prices were astronomical, because everybody was trying to negotiate on the fly. But we took, we always take the proactive steps, and I really appreciate that, before storm season, going in and making sure that these annual and three-to-five-year contracts are in place to help us out. And, and I think y'all are doing a good job, and I appreciate that. I really do. Any other further comments? Okay. Remind me. Madam Attorney, I've lost track. Do I have a motion on the table for staff recommendation? Do we have a motion yet?
Don't move.
Okay. There's a motion now by Commissioner Williams-Cox for staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. No further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Passes 401 with Mayor Pro Tim. Matlow in dissent. 13.04, please. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. This, this item seeks your approval to adopt three resolutions listed in your agenda material for the sale of real estate, real property rights from the city to FDOT for the widening of Capital Circle Southwest. This is at our Tallahassee Airport. It also would authorize allocation of approximately $2 million, the sale of that property, to capital, capital improvement program of the airport. And again, this, this is necessitated by the widening of Capital Circle Southwest in direct proximity to our airport.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Return to commission discussion.
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 13.06, because 13-05 has been deleted.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a topic that you discussed at your retreat, the need for a really robust, effective communications information plan, as well as even free rides on Star Metro. And if we wanted to bring something back quickly, it's still fluid in development, but we know time is of the essence as it relates to informing our community about vaccinations. We know the City of Tallahassee is not prime in that role. We do have our firefighters that are assisting greatly, and in an extraordinarily well-run process at our fire station in Apple Yard, Pensacola. They're helping the Department of Health, and they administer thousands and thousands of vaccines. Now, just for reference, I checked earlier today, and as of last night, 1.5 million doses, approximately, of vaccine have been administered in the state, and 26,000 of those have been administered in Leon County. Now, for reference, 6% of Florida's population has received a, at least a first dose of vaccine. And in comparison, in Leon County, it's 8%. So you, you get a reference that we're making progress. But what we all know, and it's been discussed, and I confirmed the numbers again today, that as the demographics are shared by the Department of Health, of who's being vaccinated, different age groups, and in particular, a different race. Blacks in our community have been vaccinated by 2,300 doses, or about 8%, or nearing 9%, excuse me, of our community. We know that's way out of step with the proportion of our population. I think that many of us, anecdotally, can speak to individuals that, especially those in our senior population, that may simply just not have good internet access, or not have email, simple things that we're relying upon. And so that would be a big thrust of our effort. To that end, we have already begun work with Live Communications, as well as Saks Media. I think ultimately, that may need to be expanded, but we wanted to give you an idea of what we're talking about. Allison Ferris is our Communications Director, as you know, and she, I wanted to give us a little more flavor. This will be fluid and dynamic, but I think it's important for us to talk about, even though we are not the prime in the vaccine delivery. We're not determining who can get vaccinated. I think at the end of the day, our community, and this is our duty, is to make sure we get it vaccinated as fast as we can get vaccinated, and that it happens as fairly as possible. And we know naturally, people will be left behind in the absence of our support. So that's, I'm saying everything you told me, but it's important. I think we repeat it, and I think the evidence is bearing it even since you had your conversation. So I'd like Allison just to share just a little bit about kind of the direction of where it's headed, and obviously, you'll, you'll be at the head of this ship as we move forward.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, since the pandemic began, the city has been at the forefront of protecting community health. We've done that through effective messaging focused on slowing the spread of the virus. Consistent messaging has helped raise awareness about preventative measures recommended by the CDC. Now, I'm excited to share with you that collective efforts are underway to develop a unified campaign that includes a public information approach to connect citizens with information about vaccines. Those at the table participating in this campaign include the city, Leon County government, Leon County schools, Capitol Health Plan, and other healthcare experts. We're doing this in coordination with Saks Media, as the manager mentioned, and we're working together to ensure that we have the greatest level of impact. This is an inclusive effort, and it's being designed to build trust and confidence in the vaccines, especially where we see that gap that the manager mentioned. As you know, early vaccination data tells us where added focus is most needed, and that is within our minority communities. While this trend is not necessarily unique to our area, our response can be as we overcome it. As tactics are developed to reach all segments of the community, we are committed to reaching people where they are and using creative ways to do so. This will likely include unconventional methods. Closing the gap is vitally important, and time is of the essence. In the coming weeks, we'll continue working with our partners to create and implement this strategy, and it'll be designed to move the needle forward. A couple of other highlights that I want to mention is that we have indeed joined forces with Capital Outlook and Live Communications. This is a complimentary effort, and they will play a critical role in helping us meet the minority communities. We are also continuing to amplify the messages of our medical experts. For example, TMH recently hosted a Q&amp;A. They did this on a live Zoom broadcast. It was subsequently followed by a weekly update that was instituted, and as a partner in this effort, we are showing those, excuse me, on WCO T. Accessibility is key, but it's access to more than information. As the manager mentioned, it also means access to the vaccination sites as they expand in our community. So we are working hand-in-hand with Star Metro to make that transportation available. That concludes my update, but I am available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Let's open it up for discussion. Or a motion for staff recommendation?
Move staff recommendation.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing any further comment? Okay. Commissioner Porter?
I just have a few questions. When should we expect an update on just sort of how quickly are we going to be getting this going?
Well, the ball is rolling. Like I said, you can expect to hear information via Live Communications, Capital Outlook, and the radio station as early as next week. But the development is, has started. It has begun, and we know that time is of the essence. So the rollout date is to be determined, but we know it should be sooner than later.
Okay. Awesome. And have we, are we going to have anything kind of like flyers? The print communication, is that going to be sort of in the Capital Outlook paper, or is that something else?
No, we'll develop materials. We'll absolutely share them with you all, as well as the public, so you can help us amplify that message. But there will be a whole host of collateral, from print to digital, a website, a central website, where all of the partners that I mentioned are contributing to, but it'll be a central location where that information's available.
Okay. Awesome. Are we going to have any of these materials in, in Spanish or other languages?
I think we should definitely explore that.
Okay. Awesome. And anything for, you know, people who are, who are blind, who are deaf? Any consideration about how we can reach those folks? I know that there's a lot of advanced technology. My grandfather is blind. There's a lot of readers, so they can access a lot of, you know, people with, can access other materials. But any specific consideration to those populations?
You make a great point, and that's going to be part of our process, is examining those that are a little harder to reach, and I alluded to it earlier, looking at those unconventional methods. But we're going to make sure that we focus on all segments of the community, so.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 13.07.
Thank you, sir. This item seeks your approval of the ranking of the construction manager at risk by the selection committee for the RFP, which was issued for the construction, ultimate construction management, construction of the, the new senior center. The highest-ranked proposer was Culpeper with joint, a joint venture with One Day Kane. We were quite encouraged by that. One Day Kane is a local certified MBE firm, as well as a certified small business. This is something that you've expressed a great deal of importance to. They have pledged to meet and exceed the goal of 14% certified MBE, but they've also, in my opinion, done one better and created a joint venture. We're seeking your approval for their selection of this, this project. I'd like to recognize Renetta Marshall, who's working collaboratively with Ashley Edwards. Renetta is our General Manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure, and we, of course, know this, the senior center is an extension of our Parks and Recreation Department. They've worked very well together. I understand that Mike Skaringe with Culpeper Construction is available via WebEx. He's among the recommended vendors, as well as David Delaney with One Day Kane, if, if you have any questions for them. Renetta, do you have anything to add to that? Anything I may have left out?
Thank you. No, not really anything to add. I think you summarized it, summarized it very well. Basically, this is a recommendation to move forward with a, with a C Mar contract, you know, for this much-needed project. And I echo, yes, me and Director Edwards work very well and are looking forward to moving this, moving this forward. Now, we'll be glad to answer any questions that we can.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Well, I am thrilled to be moving forward with this item. This is really exciting, and I'm coming, coming down the line. Absolutely. And so, yeah, Ms. Edwards, I know that you've been working very hard with all different facets of the recreational community. I know the Bridge Club has been very active in putting in their two cents on the new facility as well, and you're always so good with the public, and we appreciate it. Renetta, thank you so much for all your expertise in bringing this item before us. We appreciate it. Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I was going to, well, first of all, a great job, but I wanted to ask, I know, and I see Mr. Jones is on the screen as well. One Day Kane is a minority vendor, and they're doing a joint venture. But I also noticed that if, for some reason, the negotiations don't go well, then you can go to a successive, successive firm. And I want to make sure that if, for some reason, things don't go as well as we, we were hoping, will One Day Kane also be a joint venture with that next vendor if, if we have, have to go there?
Commissioner, I think I could probably answer that. They, they did not propose it that way. It would be necessary to do it. The next vendor had a separate MBE plan, which did meet our goals. It was separate and different, but they did not propose together. That would have been necessary to order to pick them. So if we're unsuccessful with this vendor, which is a joint venture, we would move, move to the next highest-ranked vendor based on their proposal, and, and One Day Kane was not part of their proposal. They had a different, they had a different MBE structure, which was good, too. It was good as well.
Okay. And my second thing is, I would like to be updated on, you know, through this project to see how this joint venture is going, because if it goes well, kudos. If it doesn't, we'll hear about it. And I want to be informed, so if I'm in the grocery store and somebody wants to talk about it, I can be, you know, well-educated on how things are going and, and, you know, just, just along those lines. I'm, I'm sure it's going to be successful, and I want to be able to brag about it. So please keep us updated on where things are and how, how this joint venture is going, because I, I think that for the police station, for the, for the police, the new campus, we have something similar with this as well, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On the police station, ma'am, they're, they're doing, you'll recall that it was at your, at the direction of the City Commission, the County Commission, and the IA Board of Directors, that we would add these special nuances to our consolidated MWSD policy. The good part about it is through our pre-bid meetings and solicitation development meetings that were also at your behest, we're now being able to, having been able to incentivize these types of capacity-building relationships for our certified firms are going to help them to experience activity at a far different level than just subcontracting. So again, with the police station, with the men of protege relationships for the MB firm, the WB firm there, and then this one with One Day Kane, a significant joint venture firm will help this firm to build capacity on operating on a project far different and with a far greater scope than they would ordinarily have as a subcontractor. So we're excited about this, because that which you've entrusted us and empowered us to do, we're now seeing being realized through these relationships in our business community.
Very good.
Very good.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think here, what you see is the fact that the message that we have been sending to the community has been heard, and staff is, is working under, I'm sure, Mr. Jones's advice and consultation to make sure that there is significant minority participation in these projects. And as he mentioned, what happens in a joint venture, rather than just a subcontractual relationship, where that minority or woman-owned business has just a small portion of the project, in a joint venture, the scope of their work and practice is much larger.
Yes.
And as Darryl mentioned, it builds capacity, so that these minority and women-owned businesses in the future, hopefully, will put themselves in a position where they're being competitive for the contracts themselves.
Responding as primes.
Yes. And so I think that we can certainly be proud of ourselves in leading the way in that regard, and hopefully, we will be a model for other municipalities and counties throughout the state, and even indeed, the nation, to follow in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson, would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yes. I would move staff recommendation. Mr. Mayor, wholeheartedly.
Been properly moved for staff recommendation by Commissioner Richardson. There's a second by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any other comment? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Manager, do we have any other business to come before us this evening?
No, sir. That concludes your policy discussion.
Okay. We are on un-adjented business speakers. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We do have speakers. We have. We have three connected virtually. We will take them after we take those who are here in person. I believe we have about a dozen or so of those. The first speaker here in chambers will be Stanley Sims, followed by O'Neal Jackson. And as I have said a couple of times this evening, three minutes for each speaker's remarks. If you'd start with your name and address, you'll have three minutes, and I'll give you a heads up when you're close to three.
Mr. Sims, thanks for joining us.
It's good to be here, Mayor. And the reason I am here is because of firefighters. I had a medical situation at my house today. And they came. This department should not have to be sitting in this room begging for respect. Not in the middle of a pandemic. When them guys was working, I don't mean to get my blood pressure down. And they all know me, because they have come to my rescue so many times, Commissioner Niemeyer, because you know how hardheaded I am. But when they come, they don't judge me. They don't rebuke me, and they treat me with respect. So I'm standing with you. The other thing I wanted to talk about is this homeless shelter that has appeared upon And I'm skeptical about this, because I call myself the pro man's champion. And I'm wrestling, but I have a problem with that shelter there. Not because I live over there. One of the main problem is only white people can do stuff like that. Black people could not put no homeless shelter on Mayhand in a government complex. We can't do stuff like, that's white privilege. To pull them kind of strings? I can't do, I can't even get a jobs program. I can't even get a, a meeting. So, so Commissioner Cox, when you said there's nothing nefarious going on, yes, I mean, excuse me, yes, it is, in plain sight. Nefarious is when this man got to stand here and hold his sign up. To me, that's nefarious. Nefarious, when we got a city manager and knows I need to see him, and he publicly denies me.
You're at about fifteen seconds.
Well, let me get on this one. We need to start talking about coming together. When will words become deeds? That's what we need, deeds. When will the lion close down the roar and extend the white arm?
You're at three minutes.
Thank you, Renetta. You're having a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Our next speaker.
Right for me, Mayor.
O'Neal Jackson, and then Mike Bellamy?
Uh, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
How you doing? Thanks for sticking with us all evening.
All right. Thank you.
Your name and, your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, okay. O'Neal Jackson Jr., eight four four North McComb Street. And that's spelled M-C-C-O-M-B, Tallahassee, Florida. The reason I spelt it is because y'all have changed the spelling of it since I was born on that street. Okay, I have a list of things here. One of them I was not gonna mention, Commissioner Cox, mention it for me, that's the twentieth of May. We do not celebrate Juneteenth in this area. Thank you, Commissioner Cox, for letting them know that. Another thing, you all put Black Lives Matter down at Gaines and Railroad. If you really want to get a good barometer of the citizens of Tallahassee and the understanding, you take that same Black Lives Matter, put it on a banner, and put it across Timber Lane and Thomasville Road. Then we can get a good barometer of Tallahassee and its citizens. All right? The thing I came here to talk to you about this afternoon, to talk with you about this afternoon, Wanneshway. Now, Rudy Hubbard, Coach Rudy Hubbard, won two of the three biggest games that Florida A&amp;M University has ever won. They have never won but three big ones that put us on the map nationally, globally. Coach Hubbard won two of them. Coach Gaetho won the other one. Coach Hubbard beat the University of Miami, Don't Care. Under Coach Hubbard, we won the first one double A national championship. But no one has ever said anything about Coach Hubbard or honored him. He was elected into the Coaches College Football Hall of Fame a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago. Wanneshway should be named Rudy Hubbard's Way from FAMU Way south to Tana Drive, and it can be done. And it should not be any dissent or negative, negativeness about that. From FAMU Way to Tana Drive should be named Rudy Hubbard Way. It's going through the athletic department of Florida A&amp;M University campus.
You have about ten seconds.
Matter of fact, it could be named Rudy Hubbard Way from Pensacola Street, because now there's no need for a railroad avenue in Tallahassee, Florida. When I was a kid, yeah, because the train came through, and you had your expresses and railroad. But now, we don't need that. Railroad Avenue has always been a second class street.
You're at three minutes.
When it was being utilized. So we need to get that to be Rudy Hubbard Way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But I will come back with the rest of my list later.
Mr. Mayor, can, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Quickly to, this was my son's middle school coach.
Uh-oh.
And he predicted, my son was trying to play basketball, and he predicted that he should have been a pulling guard. He went to college being a pulling guard at Tulane University, and the rest is history.
And he played on that eleven and oh team.
He played on that eleven and oh team, that's right. Now, the other thing I wanted to say, too, is that the Wanneshway that he's referring to, that's FAMU's territory. That's not the city's territory, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly. I'm looking at.
Oh.
Jason Wayne, yeah. So that's, FAMU can do that, they can name that whatever they want to name it.
See, I was in the, I had made a talk with, and had a conversation about that, and they said that was a city street going through FAMU.
From where, from where you just said, now Wanneshway is FAMU.
So they have the power on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, now, uh, Bruno, not Bruno, Boulevard that is now Martin Luther King, whose street was that going?
That, that might be different.
See, that was Boulevard, that's what it was named. Robin Steele's church faces there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but Wanneshway is FAMU.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, last thing, let me say this. To the city manager and the deputy, yeah, she's sitting back there?
Yes, sir.
The attitude of the police officers that I have come encountered with recently, since Lawrence, uh, not Lawrence, uh.
Chief Revel?
Yeah.
The chief. And I think y'all have kind of changed the attitude of the patrol officer, are changing the attitude. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Mike Bellamy, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
And he'll be followed by Jeremy Shaw, just to queue up the next speaker.
Okay.
I don't know, it's more of a blast from the past, seeing mushing up there, me coming back. I think he might have been here when I was last talking to y'all about a contract. Mike Bellamy, Vice President of the Tallahassee Firefighters, and a proud Tallahassee firefighter now for twenty-one years, if you can believe that. A treasurer clerk just reminded me of how old I was at the break. Good evening, Mayor, members, staff. First, I'd like to yield some of my time to recognize all of those in our community that have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd like to say how incredibly proud I am of our members, our frontline workers, and our fire department, who are responding to patients as well as delivering the vaccine day in and day out. We are truly working together to end this pandemic, and we should all be proud of that. I stand before you tonight as a voice for these frontline workers, our firefighters and paramedics. We have a couple of them here, and many of them that are watching on duty tonight. This has truly become a fight for fairness for us. We are one hundred and twenty days nearly, nearly one hundred and twenty days without a contract with the city, uncertain of our future. In the twenty-one years that I've been involved, involved in collective bargaining, this has been one of the most difficult in terms of productivity, receiving proposals back from the city, and communications. Saying that, in my experience, I am, however, confident that we can work together to reach an agreement, but we have to work together as a team. The city has come out and blamed firefighters for not having a contract. Members, that's crazy. This city says that the contract was ratified. That is not true. After seven months of working on a tentative agreement, to give it a shot, we, the, the firefighters, put that tentative agreement before our firefighters for approval. We expressed our concerns, though, behind closed doors with the city about our ability to have that contract ratified, but in good faith, our union leadership brought that to a vote. That was our way of saying, we'll be a good teammate, we'll give it a chance, but firefighters rejected that contract almost unanimously. I'll share with you what they told us and why they rejected that offer. Without the negoti, throughout the negotiations with the city, the city was very clear that the cops, the PBA, would have to swallow the same pill, nothing more, than what was being offered to the firefighters, and vice versa, period. In the eleventh hour, the city offered the cops and the PBA an unequal benefit package, of course, our member C, as it's posted at a meeting.
You're almost at three.
Which created further discrepancy in benefits, but more important, it eroded that trust. None of, none of this is happening in a vacuum. Commissioner Curtis, you mentioned a silo. None of this is happening in a silo. Three years ago, when we were told that we had, the cops and firefighters that are in negotiations had to work a longer retirement for the same benefit, no questions were asked, firefighters jumped in the water first. We agreed to the deal. What happened?
Three minutes.
As soon as the city inked our deal, Mr. Chairman, can I extend?
Captain, wrap up your comments, please.
Thank you. So what happened is, the city inked the deal with the, the firefighters, and then turned to the PBA, the cops, and said, you know what? You guys can stick with what you have, the same retirement. This issue came back up before this commission a few years ago, and, and again, it eroded that trust.
Thank you, Captain.
So now, we should not be shocked or disappointed that we have to go back to the table, but unfortunately, the city did not want to bargain any longer, and they declared impasse. The reason we're at impasse is because the city says, decided to go to impasse. So I'll wrap it up real fast.
Please.
So we're willing to do, what I'm telling you is, our message is, we're willing to do whatever it takes to continue to work with you, to, to continue to negotiate, to continue to make sessions, and we're asking for you to please come back to the table, work on an agreement that's fair for all sides, and provide the highest level of service to our community, which is why we're here to begin with. So thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Captain, appreciate it. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker, Jeremy Shaw, and then Brian Webb.
Uh, Mr. Shaw, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jeremy Shaw, I'm at twelve twenty-one Brant Drive. Um, so, so, I'll see if I can get this, through this without having to, my knees shaking paint. Okay, so, my name is Jeremy Shaw. It is the house that my grandparents bought in nineteen fifty-eight, that's where I live now with my wife. As a resident of a sixty-three year old neighborhood, I was surprised and disappointed that the opening of a cold weather shelter seemingly just appeared across the street one day without a peep. I noticed people at the Mary's and Mayhand Drive bus stops during the early morning darkness. I thought it to be odd, because normally no one is waiting so early. A month goes by before I learn that these folks are from a new shelter. What new shelter? The shelter that was open and nobody really knows much about, other than it's supposed to, to help people get out of the cold. As more information comes in from neighbors, it tells a different story that feels a lot like a backroom real estate deal that the city just went through. A rehab center for previous felons of all offense groups, including violent, sexual and mental illness. A cold weather shelter that claims to be a rehab center, as well as, that's closed during the day. A shelter where a police are told not to respond to incidents involving transient populations, something I learned tonight. The fire department's called out over and over and over to the site for other issues. Another questionable shelter like this opened, or excuse me, that was opened and then closed in Woodville, I'm not sure how long ago, but apparently from the same group. A ten year lease was just signed with the property owner. An application for permissory was sent in last week to the county and city, which is odd, because it's not on an agenda. Who approved to allow a shelter of this type to open that borders three neighborhoods? Why has there been little or no notice to the residents of these neighborhoods? I get notices on my door a week in advance informing that tree trimmers are coming, but a shelter housing violent, violent felons, sexual predators, and those with mental illness are receiving nothing. I ask, why this location? It's next to three neighborhoods. Why does the purpose of this shelter keep changing? People are drinking throughout the day at the bus stops by the building. Where do you expect the people who are turned away at night for being intoxicated to sleep if no alcohol or drugs are allowed on the premises? All attendees to the shelter, are they being tested for COVID? Do we know what there is? You can look through the windows, the white chairs, they're not six feet apart. You know, this is just what I can see from the road. You know, are they allowed to stay all the night, are they allowed to stay a week, or whatever? Which one of you can I ask for these questions? I don't know. I mean, I hear from a lot of people that they say, well, I think it's a great idea, we can put them all in one spot, we all know where they're at.
You have about fifteen seconds.
But, what? I mean, I hear all kinds of things that are going on, not a dang thing has been said that seems to make sense, and that everybody knows what's going on. It just seems to change a lot, and it seems really shady. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Brian Webb, and then Owen Shin.
Mr. Webb, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
I'm Brian Webb. My address for tonight is seventeen oh five Mayhand Drive. The building's better known as the building just west of the new homeless shelter, and my operation has become a homeless shelter in itself. And I appreciate the opportunity to stand up here in front of you and discuss this, but I'm highly disappointed in our government. I mean, there is no reason this shelter should have opened in the dark of night and had multiple offenders going and staying there without our knowledge that we were gonna encounter these kind of problems. I've built a lot of buildings in Tallahassee, I've been a CEO a long time, I complied with every rule this city has, and you tell me how this homeless shelter, who was not notified, they haven't even applied to go through the zoning or anything, and all I hear is, maybe on the fourth, we can do something for code violation. I've got pictures, I know y'all got my letter, I've got multiple videos of bodies all over that medical center, parking lot, the back, the side, and I cannot believe I'm standing up here, having to talk to you about something that should have never even been, and it wasn't approved. So in, in, in effort to try to, they haven't even gone through a Type B site plan, that's the initial. They don't even have a holding pond permit. They don't even have a holding pond permit. I looked it up today. It's not current. They just had a new roof put on. I looked it up today, no permit. Someone knows what's going on down there, and it's got to be solved by the city. We, as citizens, cannot constantly go over there at night and throw people off my building. I can't do it. That building employs nurses and doctors, they shut down for the COVID. That brings up another point, the Carney Center is shut down for COVID. They cannot operate in these closed quarters. Yet, that business that has offices cramming three and four people in an office to spend the night? It's absolutely ridiculous. And there's gotta be a solution. You know, you, well, how about the fairgrounds? You want somebody housed, how about the fairgrounds? Why would you put them in a residential business community, or allow them, you didn't put them there? Why would you allow them to even continue to bring people in there?
You're at 20 seconds.
There's felons in there, there are seven documented sexual offenders, and lo and behold, there's a daycare across the street. You guys gotta think about that, a daycare across the street, and we got sexual offenders sleeping behind my building. I am, you can tell, I will stand up here until that thing is shut down. And I'll say no more.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, your next speaker.
Owen Chin, followed by Ginger Proctor.
Mr. Chin, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you for having me. My name is Owen Chin, and I live at 1106 Brookwood Drive. And I've been a resident of Tallahassee since, like, uh, 98, last century. Uh, I've been a public defender in Miami for 17 years before I came up here. I ended up transferring here and working with Nancy Daniels until I retired in 2017. I know the criminal element, I've represented the criminals and people falsely accused. I've always been pretty much the broker between government, the prosecution, and the individual. I have empathy for the homeless, I understand, a lot of times, they're dual diagnosed and they have issues. A lot of them drug-related, alcohol-related, they, they self-medicate because they have mental issues. When the homeless shelter used to be on, uh, West Tennessee, everybody knows how much of a problem that was. When I first got here, the homeless person was, like, King Love. I, I think you guys remember King Love.
Oh, yeah.
It wasn't a big problem, he was, you know, a caricature, it was fine. But things have changed, the economy has changed, people have given up, people are unemployed. We have a pandemic going on. I lived on Mahan. I went to school here in the 70s. They were building the Capitol when I was here. I-10 used to stop at Mahan. You had to get off the interstate on Mahan. It used to be a canopy road. I wouldn't really realize I was in Tallahassee until it's all Leon High. Things have changed. You know, I, you know, the, the truck route, it used to be a truck route. And as a result, as far as the last two gentlemen, I imagine you'll get an earful from my wife and the other people coming up, it's an eyesore. And I've represented, I used to be the head of county court. I was before, uh, Judge Ashenathy Richardson, I did first appearances. I've dealt with, uh, Rice commitments, uh, with Eddie Evans, with the State Attorney's Office. What you're breeding, well, not you, but what is breeding there is a homeless situation that's gonna get out of control. The Carney Center's closed, so what happens? There's a standout order, from what I hear, about, from TPD, about not arresting anybody. I, I don't know if that's true or not, but I was a public defender and during, you know, all kinds of epidemics dealing with AIDS and everything else. And I understand the reluctance of law enforcement. Well, I understand. I'm, this is just stuff I've heard. The only thing I do know is on the response times, a little slow, understood. But a lot of people don't get arrested.
You have about 10 seconds.
Some people don't get arrested, and, uh, they get turned back out on the street, only to, like, cause more problems. I think something has to be done for the homeless, but where it is, across from, uh, daycare, by businesses, you know, the city buses, I, I've been substituting at Leon High.
You're at three minutes.
I wouldn't let my kids, or anybody's kids, go down Mahan to go to school or come back. So, you'll hear from other people, and I don't want you to think that I don't have empathy for the homeless, I do. But where it's located is just not planned for it, it's not designed for it, and it's just a COVID, super, over, uh, epidemic waiting to happen with these people.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chin.
Next is Ginger Proctor. Uh, Ms. Proctor, followed by Judy Chin.
Proctor, it's good to see you. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, my name is Ginger Proctor. I live at 1111 Brookwood Drive. Uh, my husband, Brian Proctor. Um, we live there together. And, um, it's two blocks, Brookwood is two blocks west of the CityWalk homeless shelter that has gone in at 1709 Mahan Drive. My husband and I really, together, would like to go on record as just saying that we oppose the location of the shelter, and ask that any variance that the CityWalk mission applies for would be denied. Um, you may not know this about Brookwood Drive, but we won Neighborhood of the, Small Neighborhood of the Year in 2019, and we are so proud of our street. We have a very close-knit group, lots of elderly people on our street, lots of families with young children. And the impact that this low-barrier shelter is having on our neighborhoods and the businesses in that Mahan corridor, um, it's astounding. Uh, the shelter came in under the radar with no effort to alert any of us, you all have heard that. There's been an increase in littering, trespassing, loitering, panhandling, awful things that many of us have photographed that I would not want to share. Um, the businesses on Mahan are especially suffering. Both Brian and I firmly believe that once the Mahan commercial corridor breaks down, our neighborhoods will follow suit. Um, to allow a low-barrier homeless shelter that's having all these code violations to continue in the middle of healthy neighborhoods and businesses at the expense of those who live and work and are trying to raise children is really just unacceptable. And we ask that you help us get the shelter closed and relocated to another area where it can thrive. Um, and then it won't threaten the integrity and the vitality of the neighborhoods and the businesses that are right, um, within walking distance of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. Yes, Judy Chin is next.
Chin, thank you so much for joining us. Name and address for the record, please?
Hi, thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate it. Um, I'm a court reporter, and, oh, I live at 1106 Brookwood Drive, that's my husband over there. I'm a court reporter, so I'm used to taking downwards, not necessarily speaking, so I'm not very eloquent with that. But I'll just let you know how I feel about the shelter at 1709 Mahan, and, um, what it's doing to our neighborhood. Um, it has affected me personally, because it has, I live there, I play there, and I work there. I work sometimes at 1500 Mahan, which is the brick office building at the end of the road. And this last weekend, I had to deliver exhibits to For the Record, which is a court reporting agency. I literally had to step over a homeless person. Um, I play up on Mahan by Sue's, I don't know her last name. She runs a pottery, pottery studio, and I used to take it at Lafayette, but y'all shut down. So I transferred over there, and this last Friday, I went there, I go on Friday nights, because I work during the day, and, um, I had to call the police up at Hilltop Academy, which is directly next to the pottery studio. Were homeless vagrants, all up in there. I did not, I was the only one, I did not feel safe going into the studio. I told Sue the next day what happened. Well, the police came out, they called me back, they responded. Um, and basically, I'm not going to the studio anymore, so it has affected my play. And, well, of course, my work and where I live. But right now, as we speak, there are seven sexual offenders and two sexual predators located directly across the street from a residential area. And the owner, one of the owners of the facility, CityWalk, is a sexual offender that is required to register with the state of Florida. This just doesn't cut it with me, as a resident of Tallahassee for 20 years. I raised my two daughters there, they went to Leon, there is no way I would ever let them walk up and down Mahan, absolutely not. If you would go, I mean, it's all, it's a zoo, when it's, they take the, the clients at 6:00 PM, and then they release them at 7:00. And the whole, the whole area, I'm not kidding, 40 people on Mahan, one day, that Mahan Center. I take my dog, Kazushko, to the spa that just opened there.
You have about 20 seconds.
Okay. I go to Stewart's and the beer stop. Can't go there, you just can't go. Um, I'm gonna read something, and I ask for a little extension of time. Renee Miller, who, who runs CityWalk, was quoted on 11/420 in a Zoom Woman Wednesdays. Someone asked, where will the new shelter be going? She said, as far as the location of it, that is a to-no, so we are not putting that out there. It is only going to be law enforcement, social service provider people who are working there, and the people who need to be taken there. I will tell you, it will not be in the neighborhoods, so please don't email me. It is in a commercial area that is zoned for this. That's a direct quote from Renee Miller. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Shelley Roth, and then Michelle Madison. Shelley Roth, I believe, I don't believe there's anyone outside, Mayor, so I'll move to Michelle Madison. Oh, I'm sorry, there were people outside.
Your mask, please put your mask, please put your mask on for us. Thank you. That'd be great. Your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Shelley Roth, 3747 Roswell. I was here before the holidays and spoke with you about the problems that I've been having in Seminole Manor and Mayberry Manor, and I asked you if you would look into these problems. And so I would like to give you the opportunity to tell me what you have done. I mean, I've seen a few things that have happened. Um, I can tell you that they sent, one time, somebody to pick up Roberts, somebody to clean up tires at Rankin. Um, the illegal dumping across my, that, I'm sorry, I had a stroke, so sometimes I get twisted. I'm sorry, let me redo that. The house across the street from me, that I had been complaining about, about them bringing in trash into the neighborhood, I have been harassed by the people directly across the street because I had mentioned to you guys that I anonymously put in a complaint where the city of Tallahassee put my personal information and my phone number and contact information. And now, the people in the neighborhood are calling me a snitch. Um, it's like a war zone between my neighbor and us. I haven't been at my actual home for weeks, because last week, last month, I had to call the police as they were, again, dumping a truckload of trash in my front yard across the street. Um, I'm upset. Something needs to happen about this. So did you guys look into this, or do anything about it, or have any information for me?
Are you done with your comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Manager, I'll turn it over to you. Of course, we brought this up, we brought it up at the last meeting after you testified. We put staff in touch, and Mr. Manager wants to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had Cynthia to join me with this, because we, we did follow up on it. Mr. Roth, you did indicate, immediately, within that week, we went out and picked up a great deal of debris, and that debris has been dumped illegally. It sounds like people continued to do that. We have added extra pickups. I understand that you were reached out to directly, uh, by phone, and we can do that again, to make sure we've got direct contact with you. Cynthia Barber is our deputy city manager, she's been involved, as well as Reginald O'Fonny, our general manager of community beautification and waste management. So this, this received the highest level of priority, and that's why you would have seen the pickup beyond normal, things of that nature. And I think it would be extraordinarily productive for you to be directly in contact with our general manager of that area as well.
Which is Winz, Oscar Winston?
Uh, no, ma'am, Reginald, Reginald O'Fonny is the gentleman's name. Oscar Winston is the, uh, neighborhood affairs person, we engaged them as well.
More has been done by Mr. Winston than all of the people that I've dealt with since I came the first time.
That's wonderful. Mr. Winston works directly for Cynthia Barber.
Let me just say this, this is, the major problem is bulk trash pickup. If there is no date, uh, if there's no regulations when you can put trash out, then there's always trash. And they, the people across the street know it, now that it's been put on social platforms everywhere, they know it's me that reported them, and I had to call the police about those people, because they're just dumping, 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 and they know that you're not going to do anything about it, because there's nothing put in the ordinance that says that they can't. And I'm tired of it. My son and I can't go to our house because they harass us and yell "white snitch" at us every time we pull in our driveway. And I blame you, because something needs to be done about it. Um, I, this is my three minutes.
Thank you.
We'll see you again next week, and we brought some other people this time that have similar stories in this neighborhood.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Miss, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, is the, the area that she's describing, is that in the city limits, or is it in the county?
Hold on. Ma'am, just a second, please. Let's have some order. Mr. Manager?
Uh, there is a portion there in the city, and that's obviously what we would have been addressing. We, uh, we can't address the county. So there is a portion in the city that, um, our community beautification department did address, and we noticed that, uh, there were things illegally dumped, and they've, they've, uh, added emphasis for that, to make sure we pick it up in the city, uh, the county's not, uh, part of our jurisdiction that we can address.
I, I want to encourage her to also go to the county and share, um, this concern there as well. I know that we, we, if we see trash, we're gonna pick it up, but I'm saying, when you're, you're talking about a regular pickup time, that's a regular pickup time for city residents and city services, but for, for the county part, that's a, that's another piece. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, it, it's completely different. That's, that's right.
Okay, so I encourage you to, to, to visit with the county commission or your commissioner, uh, because with the county, they have, uh, single-member districts, I'm not sure who your commissioner is, but, so you can, so you can hit it on both sides. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Ma'am, I, I, I understand, we're not gonna have the dialogue back and forth, because number one, we can't hear you at the microphone, but I do have Ms. Barber in the back of the room. Ms. Barber, if you'll please follow up one more time. I'm sure that you can help put her in contact also with the right people at the county, so there's a coordinated effort between the two governments, uh, to address the issue, uh, in this neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please?
Next speaker is Michelle Madison, and then Renee Collette, so Michelle Madison.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Michelle Madison, 2610 MacArthur Street. So, hi, I'm Michelle Madison. Actually, a variety of you know me and have actually gone to events with me and have worked with me as well. I run a local business where I do outreach with youth to teach science, doing agriculture. I've been very consistent in Title I schools and juvenile detention facilities, and luckily enough, business is doing very well, and we have actually, uh, moved up to the national scale. So as someone who really cares about Tallahassee and has been able, um, to start a business here and make a difference in the community and find a community here, um, I actually moved my mom up here, because it was so great here, and there were events, and it was beautiful here, and not only did, was I able to get my mom to move up here, but I then, a couple of months later, was able to get my aunt to move up here. Um, we live in Seminole Manor and Mayberry Manor, which I fully intend, in the future, to completely buy up and make the neighborhood that it should be. I'm not that rich yet, but I guarantee you, I will get there. Um, currently, however, I am afraid to walk down my street, because there is a house on the corner that has two pitfalls that are just constantly tied up and locked up outside. Sometimes they get loose, and I have had to jump the fence to get away from the new pitfall that they brought. At 1705 Kelly Street, a man by the name of Richard lived in that house for 30 years. His son, who is now illegally running a business out of his front yard, has now moved in. He has a orange vehicle that has no tag on it. He has a orange vehicle that has no tag on it that has been sitting, it was sitting on the street. I actually had to call the police on this man because he has a German shepherd that he just lets loose and runs around the neighborhood. My aunt has two small dogs. She wants to sell her house and go back to West Palm Beach. I moved my aunt up here because it was a good, it was a neighborhood that I liked and that I wanted to make better. This man has brought an entire junkyard into the place. There's now a bright orange car with no tag that's now just sitting in his yard. He had an orange sticker on it. They never came back. There's still no tag on it. No one is doing anything about it. There was a tornado today, a couple of miles down at the airport. And if that tornado would have come a little bit closer, this man is, I asked him, what do you do for a living? He told me he was a contractor. Oh, so you have your contractor's license? Well, I'm, I'm a subcontractor.
You have 15 seconds.
Somebody needs to make sure that code enforcement is actually enforcing the code. It is dangerous. If that tornado would have came, my aunt's house would be gone. My aunt is afraid to leave her house. And if she's gonna move, that is, I will move. I will move my whole family out. I will say goodbye to Seminole Manor. I will take my business elsewhere. If I, if you believe in voting with your dollar, I wanna support City of Tallahassee. But if I'm gonna support City of Tallahassee, then I need you to support its citizens.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Renee Collette and then Carol Mattis.
Thank you for joining us.
I'm kind of upset because I...
Name, name and address for the record, please.
Renee Collette, 1702 Eisenhower. My problem is I live right in front of Sable Palm Elementary where private citizens on the right side of the road on Villamore dump on the city property and nobody picks anything up. And I open up my front door looking down Villamore to see trash constantly. I've called code. Code says, oh, we can't do anything about it because it's a private citizen and it's on city's property. Called the city, called the school, called, I have been fighting with this now. Half of Tallahassee's problem is there's too much government because they're passing the buck. I have talked to city, county, school people. Still, we're having issues. Right now, our neighborhood looks worse than the first time that we were here. It's crazy. And you all need to do something about it because it's not getting done any other way. Also, I have just ordered my first 100 Trashahassy Pick It Up signs. And from now on, when I see areas that need trash, I'm going to be putting it there and then posting it on Facebook. Because somebody needs to be held accountable. I have made plenty of phone calls, talked to plenty of people, and we just don't get anywhere. Just you call them, they call you, you call them, nothing happens. And I'm tired of the trash. Orange Avenue at the beginning of Eisenhower is trashed. All the way down Rankin is trashed with tires again. It's, it's ridiculous that nobody does their jobs here. Nobody does their jobs. And also, what are you going to do about my sister, who you, you talked to already, that are being threatened? I mean, I put on there to take it down. It got taken down, but still it's, I mean, this is all because nobody follows through with codes. Codes need to be looked at. A time limit needs to be given, 72 hours, put out your big bulk pickup. Stick to it. If they don't pick it up, then give them a fine and this will be fixed. I don't understand how hard that is. Obviously, it's hard for you guys because it's not being done. I lived in New York, I lived in Miami, none of this has happened in Miami, none of this happens in New York, none of it happens in New Jersey. And I've been Tallahassee two years and all I've done is make phone calls. So I want some answers. And I want, and I want action. I don't want answers, I want action. I want to see a clean neighborhood. And quit passing the buck. Enforce your codes. And if they're not enforceable, fix them so they are. Cause I know I've...
You're two and a half minutes.
I know a friend who lives on Tennessee and Amelia Circle, and she has had fines for garbage. And, but my neighborhood doesn't get any fines. Explain it. Why? I want answers. And I want to be on the agenda for the next time as well. We're gonna be back, we're gonna keep doing this, we're gonna keep bringing people until this is fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
Fix it.
Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. Mr. Clark, our next speaker.
Carol Mattis and then Kirsten Olson.
Thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Carol Mattis. I'm Michelle's aunt. I live at 1702 Kelly Street. I moved here from West Palm Beach. I'm originally from New York. I moved here because it was a beautiful area. I bought a beautiful house and somebody else moved in across the street from me and he's running a junkyard from his house. Michelle, you have pictures, right? Um, at the last tornado warning, I went over to him and I said, are you gonna get rid of this stuff because it could kill somebody? And he said, well, I'll try. Um, every day he loads stuff out at the front of his house. I thought that I was living in a residential community, but obviously he's running a business from his house and he has all this junk and all hours of the night, people come and buy things and leave. I reported it to code twice. Michelle reported it to code. I think Renee reported it to code and nothing's been done. I have two little Yorkie dogs. I'm afraid to walk them because there's loose dogs all around the neighborhood and I read stories about little dogs getting attacked by big dogs. So I don't have the luxury and the experience of walking my dogs and meeting my neighbors like I did in West Palm Beach, like I did in New York City, because I'm fearful of the animals attacking me and my animals. And honestly, when I lived in New York, none of this ever happened. When I lived in West Palm Beach, forget it, in West Palm Beach, you would get a fine immediately, even Miami and Fort Lauderdale. And honestly, I'm thinking about selling my house and going back to West Palm Beach. And it's really beautiful here. It's so country and tree, but I, I can't live with a junkyard. Did you, do any of you remember Sanford and Son? That's, that's what the house across the street from me looks like, like a junkyard. And it's not fair. I mean, he could build a fence. I mean, I have no problem with him building a fence. And honestly, I don't want somebody to get fined and I don't want to cause problems. This is the way that he's earning his living, but there has to be restrictions. He has to be able to make a fence or, or fix it so that it doesn't look just, loose pieces of wood, a washer and a dryer, a broken up, um, basketball court, um, just boxes and boxes and boxes of stuff. I mean, all kinds of junk. And he, he gets it put away maybe for one day and then the next day he unloads again.
You have 15 seconds.
But all night long, people come and it's, you shouldn't have a business in a residential community. It's not fair to your neighbors. Okay? And I, really, I don't know what, I don't know what to do anymore because I called code twice. My friends called code and nothing gets done. And with the weather, I mean, we had a tornado warning today. That could have broke my windows, broke my roof. If I was outside, it could kill me. And I don't, I don't know what to do. Can you tell me what the process is to, to have this taken care of?
Again, I know that Cynthia Barber, who I believe is outside with your family, uh, I would encourage you immediately to meet with her right now.
Who, which who?
Ms. Barber's out in the, in the, in the, in the chamber.
I mean, would you wanna live across the street from a junkyard?
Oh, of course not.
Right? I mean, the value of my...
We, we either gotta step up or, um, or wrap up so, so that we can, uh, we could talk. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clark, our next speaker, please.
Kirsten Olson.
Ms. Olson, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Kirsten Olson. I live at 1225 Talbot Avenue in Greater Brand Hills. And, uh, my husband grew up in the house we live in. Um, we re-bought it back later because he loved the neighborhood so much and he loves Tallahassee so much and I love it too. Um, and that's why we're raising our son here. Um, and so we were really upset when this low barrier shelter moved in because it's at 1709 Mahan Drive, which is an office building that's right across from our neighborhood. People cross into our neighborhood all the time. Um, and because it's a low barrier shelter, it's got, as you've heard from other speakers, it's got sex offenders, it's got violent felons, it got people with drug problems. My son saw his first drug deal happen there. Um, it's, uh, you know, there's people with a lot of serious mental illnesses. I don't know how to deal with that. You know, the mini mart that's right next to it, which is next to the patients first, you know, we go there all the time, like when we pick up my son from school and we would stop and get a drink. And now we go there, people are approaching us and waving at us and, you know, a guy came up to me and he's like six foot two and, you know, looks to be out of it and, you know, being very aggressive about for money. And it's scaring a lot of us. It really is. And we don't know what to do. And, you know, we have a lot of kids and we have a lot of families and we have a lot of elderly people and widows. And, you know, it's like, it, it's like, kind of like a hunting ground right next to us. I mean, if I was a sexual predator, man, I'd love to live near all those daycares and schools and neighborhoods where people really just don't know how to deal with me. I mean, I'm not sure exactly what to do. I, I did have a question for you, one que, two questions. The first question is, why weren't we notified that this was moving to our, sorry with my mask? The question is, why weren't we notified that this was moving to our neighborhood? And we even had a chance to talk about some of these issues beforehand? So I'd like to hear from each one of you why we weren't notified. All the neighborhoods are directly adjoining it because they're, they're out during the day and walking around and, uh, you know, calling police is, is, is difficult and something would have already happened before they got there. And then the second question I wanted to ask you is, why did you think it was a good idea to put unfortunate souls who have a lot of problems and need a lot of help next to places that there are schools, like we've mentioned, daycares and families with kids and, you know, people who, 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 you know, have no recourse on how to deal with these people? So I'd like each one of you...
You have 15 seconds.
...to address why that seemed that that was going through your mind as this is a great spot for them. Some other location needs to be helped. Thank you very much.
Sure. I, I'll take the stab at it and you don't have to hear from all five of us because I can answer you by saying it has not reached our level. So in a council management form of government, we have the government that runs the day-to-day operations and I know that we are going to have a discussion about this when we get to commission time and maybe we can get some of the questions answered. But the immediate question you ask, why did we decide, it has not reached our level, uh, for the decision of the placemaking. This is done on a staff level through the process and we're gonna ask for an update on the process as well and where we are and why, why, why we have gotten to this point. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll give that at the right time, but I want to be, the, the city's not operating that shelter and the city didn't put it there. But I, I think we, we've got the experts on WebEx, I think a full discussion is in order, but that's not a city-operated facility. It wasn't put there at the direction of any of the folks in, on this dial, so myself or any city staff. So I don't want to leave that impression that it was a decision of the city. Now the cities, now we're engaged to, to take action. I think that's the, the report we'll give you.
Correct. We're, we're about to have a long discussion, I believe, about this, um, uh, when, when we get to the next step of the meeting. Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Mayor, that's the last speaker I have in person. So if there's someone else who does wish to speak in person, they, uh, need to, um, let me know and we'll then coordinate getting a speaker card. But I do have three individuals who I assume are still connected, um, to our meeting that we do need to connect with and those will be Janice Howell, followed by Samantha Johnson. So Janice Howell is our first virtual speaker.
Ms. Howell, are you with us? Ms. Howell?
Yes, I'm with you. Yes.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, thank you for providing the opportunity to submit, to submit my concerns. My name is Janice Howell and I live at 2920 Callaway Road, just off North Monroe Street before the I-10 eastbound on-ramp. My comments are not intended to disparage or indigent and I certainly realize that we are still feeling the effects of the pandemic. But as a result of the city and county's response to COVID, a large population of our homeless citizens were placed at Seven Hills Inns and Suites, Howard Johnson and potentially other hotels on North Monroe. Our homeless population have resided in these hotels for approximately 10 months. These hotels are zoned Commercial Parkway District and were never intended to be used as permanent residential dwelling. The Commercial Parkway District zoning allows 16 dwelling units per acre. These limitations are intended to minimize and control ingress and egress to our tenor arrow roadways and to promote smooth and safe traffic flow of the general traveling public. Often I leave my home and travel down Lake Shore to access the shops on Timber Lane Road while avoiding the interstate. Lacking resources and programs, our homeless congregate on the corner of Lake Shore and North Monroe on both public and private properties where they partake in the consumption of alcoholic beverages. Our homeless walk into the traffic and across the street without regard to their personal safety or the emotional trauma that their injury would cause to an unsuspecting local motorist or tourist. Problems arise when motorists are turning from North Monroe onto Lake Shore. At this intersection, North Monroe is six lanes, open, free of canopy trees and brightly lit from intense sunshine. But also at this intersection, Lake Shore is closed, dark and densely canopied from multiple mature oak trees. It is difficult for a motorist's eyes to adjust to the direct sunlight from, from the direct sunlight to a dense tree canopy. This endangers the lives of not only our homeless population and local motorists, but also endangers the lives of tourists while they are seeking and attempting to access Candlewood Suites on Lake Shore. If this wasn't enough, there exists an S, X, an S curve that is so contorted that the speed limit is reduced to 15 miles per hour, making this particular intersection challenging to navigate if the motorist is minimally distracting. Our homeless citizens often stand very close to the road at this location. In January 2021, just a couple of weeks ago, at least one pedestrian was killed at this intersection. I have personally witnessed people running from the sidewalk to cars on North Monroe Street in an attempt to exchange cash, food, or drugs. One particular incident caused seven or more cars to be blocked while waiting for the conclusion of these exchanges. It worked out good for me. Often, I call 911, but I've been told by dispatch that I can no longer call 911 because there's no actual emergency. These concerns, these concerns have been intensified and exasperated as a result of the permanent placement of our homeless in these hotels.
You're at three minutes.
Ms. Please wrap up your comments.
Thank you. I have been told that the Carney Center was converted to, for the use of women and children and that there are currently no plans to relocate our homeless population away from these hotels to a safer location. This implies that there is intent to create permanent dwelling in a Commercial Parkway District. I'm asking that the city address these issues and bring these privately honed hotels back into compliance with our zoning ordinances. But I also want to add that I am aware that the Big Ben Homeless Coalition is being funded by Leon County and the City of Tallahassee. So there is some input that you have with the direction of our, our homeless response.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Samantha Johnson, followed by Sean Nyberg.
I didn't mean to get finished on myself.
Ms. Johnson, thank you so much for joining us.
Hi, my name is Samantha Johnson. I live at 1212 Claude Bichard. Um, I too would like to express my concern over the Mahan Shelter. The property was opened without notice to the residents within 1,000 feet, which is required by the municipal land code when opening a transient residential facility. I personally live 2,814 feet away. And in the past two months, we've experienced homeless in properties for sale and abandoned houses and also in the sheds of backyards of properties. So we're already seeing an effect and we're 2,814 feet away. Um, I would also like to just make you guys aware of some crime statistics. I'm referencing a half mile radius around the shelter and I'm comparing 30 days prior to the shelter opening to 30 days after the shelter opened. So battery has increased by 50%. Disorderly conduct has increased by 150%. Loud music noise incidents have increased by 300% and suspicious incidents have increased by 83%. We have contacted the city and tried to get code enforcement, we've tried to get involvement and we're just, we're receiving a lot of reluctance from the city to engage in this issue. Um, I know that there was previous litigation with the, um, the person that runs this facility, Renee Miller, and the city of Wakulla. Um, I believe they shut down one of her other housing projects. of Le Cola. I believe they shut down one of her other housing projects. So I know that this is a delicate issue and you have to tread lightly, but we would really like to hear a plan or some sort of direction as to what we can expect from this, this issue and how it's going to be addressed. Thank you for letting me speak and I hope you guys will take my comments under regards. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Sean Nyberg.
Mr. Nyberg, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Sean Nyberg, 919 Brookwood Drive. I want to speak to the, the shelter issue. I've sent all of you last night a letter from our homeowners, I'm sorry, our Neighborhood Association, speaking to this. But I do want to say that, as you can already hear, emotions are high on this issue. A lot of people are impacted by this. But I'll say this, it has raised the awareness of the homeless situation in Tallahassee. One of the things that Renee Miller has brought to our attention is the increase in the number of homeless that have impacted Tallahassee. Through the county commission last night, we heard, you know, more statistics about the encampments and so forth and just how it's almost blossomed and bloomed and exploded, the number of people that need services and care. We're not unsympathetic to that. In fact, we're touched by that. We are grieved by it as a neighborhood. But we're also, you know, this level of a situation is not something that neighborhoods are expected to handle. If we had been noticed and we could become part of a solution as a bigger community effort to help, you know, manage or support or do whatever for this shelter, but that's not what would happen. What happened was it, it kind of came in as a stealth item. And it's taken us by surprise. So reactions are going to be high and hot. People have safety fears because they see a lot of activities that they wouldn't normally see in their neighborhoods. And that's unfortunate because this is going to prevent these kinds of efforts from going forward. And I spoke earlier to you on another matter for the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods about a comprehensive plan for Midtown. Well, I would suggest tonight that from what I'm hearing from other people from my neighborhood and from neighborhoods around this, that the city needs to maybe work together to try to get a comprehensive plan on how you want to address this situation as a city and working with all the various, and I'll say piecemeal and patchwork solutions that are going on. All these different Big Ben Continuum of Care, all these homeless shelter people and different ministries that try to address this need are just ill-equipped to handle the numbers that are coming forward at this time. So our neighborhoods are not knee jerk, not in my backyard people, but we are very concerned about this population that is ever-growing and becoming quite aggressive at times. So we want to see them get the care that they need, but we want to see it done in a compassionate and healthy way. And right now, we don't think that that's what's taking place because of the various health conditions that we're, you know, experiencing, even you tonight here, enforcement of masks, social distancing and so forth. That is not what's taking place out there. And that's unfortunate. We wish there was a facility that was big enough to do all these kinds of things. But unfortunately, we're not seeing that take place. And I understand your position that it wasn't, that you as city, you know, launched this into our community, but you were aware at some levels that this was taking place. And we ask you now that you are aware and very aware of it, that you start formulating some master plan, a cohesive plan that reaches out and solves this kind of situation or at least addresses it
Thank you.
in a more humane and dignified way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Nyberg. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
I have no further speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Last call. Anyone else here that'd like to speak before the city commission? Let's go to commission time, starting with Commissioner Porter.
Okay. Well, first I wanted to say, you know, to everyone who spoke, thank you for coming. And I can speak for myself. I hear you. I hear your concerns. And I know that we are gonna, I'm sure, have a discussion about how we're gonna move forward. I have four things that I wanted to bring up. They're pretty quick. One is just, I wanted to put on your radar, you know, that I am now sitting on the ARPC. There was a Senate bill, Senate Bill 62, that has been filed. There's no House companion that would essentially get rid of all regional planning councils. So that's something that the IRPC is dealing with. County Commissioner Dozier is the, is the chair of the IRPC currently. And I, they have asked us to consider some cities that have, that participate with regional planning councils are passing resolutions as bodies. It's something that the county might be taking up as well to oppose the Senate bill. This is, it's passed its first committee yesterday. As I said, there's no House companion, but I wanted to put this on your radar as something that I'm going to be discussing further with the executive director of the IRPC and plan to bring back to this body for consideration if, if it comes to that point. Another thing I wanted to bring up, I, an issue in Summerbrook, I had the opportunity to meet with some residents of the Summerbrook community and about a neighborhood issue they're dealing with. I was hoping we could have an agenda item brought back that would explore the condemnation order that both the Summerbrook community and the developer seem to, seem to both agree on is a way forward for them regarding sort of the Cawthorn property and the, the entrance to the Summerbrook community. I think that's something that staff has been, has been in communication with the neighborhood with. I wanted to bring that up. And then lastly, just something I spoke about with, or I've been in touch with staff about, I know Commissioner Richardson, you brought up at our retreat, you know, whether or not we were going to consider a, the climate emergency resolution as something, if that might come back before us, if we could see if that is something that we want to pursue, if it's redundant to our clean energy plan that we've already, you know, adopted, but just further consideration about that moving forward maybe in the future. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say to, to, to the residents on Mayhand, I hear you as well. I hear you. And I've been hearing you. I've gotten your emails. And let me just say that, as has been said earlier, we were not aware, and if I'm not mistaken, CityWalk is that private property or they're leasing it or, or something along those lines.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things that people always say about government is that you don't want government invading upon your, your private rights. And so city, we, we didn't, we didn't do it. We are aware of it now and know that there's some things that need to be done. They didn't ask permission from the city to do what they did. They just did it. And so now it's sitting in our lap to try to figure it out. And I also, we also just, last month, we had a workshop on homelessness. I don't know if any of you attended, were aware of it, or paid any attention to it. We are aware that we have a growing homeless population, but for the grace of God, all of us could be in that population because, because of the pandemic, because people are losing their jobs, because of the lack of healthcare, adequate care for, for mental health, lots of, lots of things are happening. And so I've been doing, personally, I've been doing some soul searching and I was thinking, you know, on Sundays, we go to church and we pray for everybody around 11 o'clock or what have you. And then we go back into our own little worlds. And as long as we don't see what's going on with other people who are less fortunate, we don't even think about it until it comes to our, our neighborhood. And then my other soul searching was, how would I feel if this, if this popped up in, in my neighborhood? So I'm, I gotta empathize, but I also got to think about, so what do we do? We, not just the government, but we as a community. Because just like, none of you would want me to come to your house and say, you know, you can't have this big party in your yard because, you know, we're in COVID and you can't do this and you can't do that. Until CityWalk comes and does something that where we can do something, if they came and applied for a permit or what have you to do that, then that activates an opportunity for us to say, no, this, you can't do this. So help us. We're, we don't have the answers. And, and thank you for asking each one of us to tell you how it happened. We don't know how it happened. They operated their own practice, like many businesses do. And while I think that they, they may be thinking that they're trying to do community good, but we just have more homeless people than we know what to do with right now. And we're trying, we're trying to find solutions to treat people humanely and with empathy and, and to try to take care of the least of these among us because that's what some of us believe that we're supposed to be doing. And I apologize. I'm sorry that it's happening in your neighborhood. And we're, we're gonna, we're gonna do what we can to, to try to fix it, to try to help it. But in the, in the meantime, I just hope that we all can come up with some solutions of how we can, how we can be neighborly, how we can love our neighbor as ourself and how we can help get those who need help, get help for them. So it's not that, you know, I am very empathetic. I'm just sitting here listening. It's making, making my neck and my head hurt just thinking about what you must be, what you must be going through. When the shelter was on Tennessee Street and it was moving to Pensacola Street, it was the same kind of, kind of thing, same kind of stress that those, the folks on Pensacola Street didn't want it there either. But until we can figure out how to help our neighbors who are right now not able to help themselves, and I know that some of them have done some, done some things that you wouldn't want them in your neighborhood, I'm just wondering if, if perhaps, city manager, is, is there something that we can do for security and protection, such as some increased police enforcement to, to be there to protect the neighbors in the neighborhood from folks getting beyond the area of the shelter? And, and I heard that they have, I drove through there this morning to see what was going on. I drove through there close to nine o'clock and I didn't see anybody on the street. So I don't know where they were. As I said, they let them out at seven. I didn't see anybody. So I don't know where they go or what's going on. But if we can have some, you know, maybe stepped up police presence somewhere nearby, maybe that'll make them not venture into neighborhoods and do things. But there are things, according to Manslow's hierarchical needs, there are things that we all need, including the homeless. They need food, shelter, water, and a number of other things. So they are trying to get those needs as well. So we just got to figure out how to help each other and be, and be neighborly about it while protecting, you know, your private properties and your, and your family. So help us come up with suggestions. Don't just leave it here. Let's, let's work together. Let's figure out how we can, how we can make this happen. I wanted to also acknowledge, we talked about it at the retreat a little bit, I think, but I want to acknowledge the loss of a, of a local hero in Ms. Anita Davis. Many of us, our city is in, in better shape than it was because of people like Ms. Anita Davis and the things that she did to, to further us into being better. And so I wanted to recognize her, her services were this week. And thank you to the mayor's office for preparing and sending a resolution over to recognize her accomplishments. She was the first elected black female to the county commission. She was, she never served in the city commission, but what she did there paved the way for so many others. And there's a beautiful picture online of she and former Mayor D. Edmund Johnson. And you can, the expression on their faces looked like sisters because they were sisters of the cause, because they were pioneers. And I stand proudly on their shoulders. The other thing is that, in that same vein, I want to acknowledge that we elected our first female vice president ever in, in this country. We, you know, other countries who we, we say we're better than, we finally elected a woman to be vice president. And one of these days, we're going to elect a woman to be president. And I'll, I'll be honored to vote for her. I also want to say kudos to former aide to Commissioner Richardson, Vince Evans, who serves on this, that vice president's staff. So we have direct connections from Tallahassee to the White House. And I think that that's, that says a lot about the people who live and work and play here. And I want you to be able to return to play because playing is good mentally for all of us to have a place to play. So I want you to be able to do that. And I also want to wish Kamau Johnson well. As you all know, we are very proud of him for what he's doing on the, he had an opportunity to go be on the PGA tour, but tested positive for COVID and had to withdraw. His mother is hospitalized. And we want to just wish them well and hope that he gets to realize his dream. For those of you who don't know his story, it's a very, it's the story of what happens in Tallahassee. One of our own city employees, Jan Auger, took him under her wing when he was dropping out of school and took him on the golf course and set him on a path to success when he discovered his love for golf. It could have been a different way. So want to wish him well and let him know that we're very, very proud of him. And his response on Facebook was to quote Jeremiah 2911. And for those of you who, who are believers, you know that, that says that, I know the thoughts that I have for you and there for you to, to have a successful end. And so he understands that this is just another hurdle and that he will get his chance to be on the PGA tour. So those are the things that I wanted to highlight. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief because I know we all want to go home at this point. But, but I wanted to address the homeless issue because it's been certainly something that all of us have been aware of and have been wrestling with how we address this issue. One of the things that I was surprised to find out from the Carney Center Director is at one point, and it may still be happening, that's why we see the ever-growing homeless population in Tallahassee and Leon County, is that there are areas in close proximity to us, even in north of us, in Georgia, where there were jurisdictions that were referring their homeless population who were incurring criminal charges. They were referring them to the Carney Center when it was open. And the director said these people would show up with referrals from the court saying that they were to come to the Carney Center in Tallahassee. And so that's why, that's part of the reason, I'm sure, that we're seeing this growing, escalating homeless population here in Tallahassee and Leon County. And we heard it's not just the neighborhood at CityWalk, but it's, I hear all the time about the growing homeless population at North Monroe and I-10. I got an email from a land developer here in town. There's a growing homeless population at Capital Circle Northwest and, and I-10. So it's growing all over the community. And the first, one thing I want to say, you know, there was a gentleman earlier that recommended the fairgrounds. Well, I would, I would assure you that there are well-established, proud neighborhoods within close proximity to the fairgrounds as well. And I wouldn't wish that on them either. I wouldn't allow it to happen because it's not far from where I live and where Commissioner Williams Cox lives. So we certainly wouldn't let that happen to our neighbors in those areas either. But what we've, what we've got to wrestle with is how we do come up with a comprehensive plan for dealing with this issue in our community. It does have very serious impacts on families, on neighborhoods, on property values. You heard the crime statistics. We heard it in Frenchtown when the homeless shelter was located on Tennessee Street, but abutted the Frenchtown neighborhood. We heard it on West Pensacola Street. A friend of mine owns the shopping center there on West Pensacola. I used to get calls from him all the time complaining about the homeless population. And we would see them on West Tennessee Street and the havoc that was created there. We're very empathetic with that population. We have to be because they are a part of our community. They're human beings. But at the same time, we can't sacrifice But at the same time, we can't sacrifice our established citizens and neighborhoods in that respect. There's something that we've got to do and we've got to do it immediately. I think we've got to address this situation at CityWalk because obviously it has had a tremendous negative effect on that neighborhood and it's unfair to them. When you've invested thousands of dollars in your property, you've raised families there, you've committed yourself to being a positive part of that neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, this is thrust on you and your neighbors. It's, it's not an issue that the city is going to be able to resolve by itself. We are going to have to work with our partners, our sister governments, the county, the social services, human services organizations, the Big Ben Continuum of Care, agencies like CityWalk to come up with a comprehensive plan for how to address this issue. Because if we don't, we're going to see situations like I've seen in downtown Jacksonville where the homeless, they've just taken over downtown Jacksonville. I don't know what the issue is over there, but if you ever have an opportunity to visit the downtown bus transfer facility in Jacksonville, it may as well be a homeless camp. So I, I, I'm with Commissioner Williams Cox, I empathize with the homeless, they have needs. I know that the police are kind of at a loggerhead because we can't, if we arrest them, they have to take them to jail. And if the jail becomes full, then there's, there's a, a, a situation where we're creating more opportunities for this COVID virus to manifest itself. If you all heard the young lady, the computer technician that was arrested recently, when she came out of the jail, she tested positive for COVID. So I, I think our police officers and deputies are reluctant to arrest these people because, I mean, our jail could be overrun with, you know, people with, with the virus and other conditions in that closed environment. So I say that, all of that to say this, it's going to have to be a partnership. Maybe the city can take the lead, maybe some of the other organizations can take the lead and we, of course, be a partner in that. But I don't want anybody to think that the city of Tallahassee government in and of itself is going to solve this issue. It's not happening in any other city that I've seen and the homeless populations are growing in cities throughout our state and nation. But we're committed to being a strong, vibrant partner in that process. And so I hope that soon we, we get to the point where those organizations, Mr. Mayor, are coming together to develop that kind of plan. I too, Commissioner Williams Cox, thank you, I think we were thinking along the same lines, want to express my condolences to the Davis family at the death of former Commissioner and NAACP President Anita Davis. I'm sitting here today because of Anita. It was because of her and her efforts as president of the NAACP that the Leon County School Board went to single-member districts to elect its members. And I was elected as the first African-American male to that body, where I served six years and was the first of African-American male to serve as chairman. But for the efforts of Anita Davis, that would not have happened. I was proud to call her a friend and a neighbor. We live just blocks from each other. She in the Jake Gaither neighborhood and me just north of that neighborhood. And so I want to recognize her and certainly express my and my family's condolences to her family for their loss. And that's all that I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it, Commissioner. Mayor, put in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, this is a difficult issue. I think Commissioner Williams Cox navigated it about the best you can. I mean, we, we do know, we have an issue and it's across our, our community and we're hearing it on Gaines Street and North Monroe and Mayhem with a growing population of people experiencing homelessness. And that was when COVID hit, you know, all bets were off, people didn't know where to shelter people. So a lot of the hotels had to be rented out to provide shelter. But, you know, the overarching question, I think, is where do we go as a community to really address this need? Because you, you do have the right, you know, to have, not have people trespass on your property and to feel safe in your community, but even if this shelter got shut down tomorrow, people are going to go somewhere. You know, we, we can displace the issue, we can move the issue, we can put it on a different neighborhood, or we can try to find a solution that i- is, is a win for everybody. And that's, will take, I think, a community-wide effort to really invest. And things that we know that work, you know, the city of Tallahassee does engage in helping with rapid rehousing and we're engaged, engaged on that. We recently set forward the pilot program to have mental health counselors respond to some issues instead of law enforcement, to really see how we can go out and interact with people where they are and bring a better situation about. So I, I do think we need a larger conversation, community-wide, with our partners at the county, with our partners at Human Services, and recognize that this need is greater than what we're able to accomplish right now with our current resources and look to see how we can maybe expedite some of these programs where we can, the, the best solution for homelessness is put people in homes. You know, and when you have so many people concentrated in one area, that's when you start to see more issues. But if we can get people in homes, we can get them connected with the right types of counselors and mental health services who, you know, I mean, these funding has been cut years and years and years, but what works is people who are in homes and they have a counselor that can reach out to them, go to their home, help them take their medication, make sure they're taking their medication monthly, and, and that works, that is the solution. You know, the biggest problem is, where do you find the funding for that? You know, can the city budget do it alone? I think Commissioner Richardson has said no, and I, and I, and I would agree with him there. But that doesn't mean we can't play a role in trying to figure this out. So I, I think the, as far as how this situation came about, I, I think CityWalk was looking to help people that they saw were in need. And did it roll out the way we all think it should have? Was there enough communication? I agree with you that no, I don't think there was enough communication. You know, we have always been about, you know, communicating with neighborhoods, letting them know what's going to happen upfront, but we also know that putting a shelter anywhere, there's going to be a lot of backlash because nobody wants a shelter like this in their area. So it's, it's what do you do? Can you send everybody to the Carney Center? The neighborhoods around the Carney Center have issues as well, they, they continue to complain. So I'm looking for us to really connect with all of our partners across the community and try to find a bigger solution and a better solution to help the people who are in need that can also provide relief to our neighborhoods that, that, that are experiencing things that they're quite frankly not used to experiencing in their area. So I'm sure that conversation will continue, Mr. Mayor and City Manager. But I do want to address three things that I wanted to bring to tonight's meeting. I also met with Summerbrook and, and their issue is they, they, they've been working, there's a new, there's new housing being built and they're trying to control the traffic away from the houses that have families and they've identified a corridor that would connect directly to Preservation Road. And the, the Neighborhood Association and I believe the developer are both on board. So I guess the question is how, how can the city play a role in having that happen? So I'd like to make a motion that we just bring back an agenda item with an update on the Summerbrook Road situation and see if there's a way the city can be helpful and just analyze all the different decisions we would have to make to do that.
Can I help you out a little bit and I'll second your motion? It's, it's not just the Summerfield Road specifically, it's the interconnection between Somerville and the Cawthorn property that is being developed and the egress and the ingress. And I'll second your motion as well. Any further comment?
Staff have clear direction?
Yes, sir.
And I talked to, I think I told you Reese, when I talked to Tommy today, he said that there is agreement all the way around, this should be an easy solution. I believe we need to come in and actually perform eminent domain on a piece, part of the parcel, if, if I understand it correctly. Otherwise, they will have to go through the process of notifying every single house in their neighborhood and they have to go through the process of, of doing their surveys and everything. And he has suggested and everybody agrees that this is the easiest and the friendliest way to move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think what's best, and I know the city attorney's office is engaged in this, I think an agenda item is completely appropriate so we can lay out the issue, you know, what is trying to be achieved, where the neighborhood, you know, the information we have from the neighborhood, and the, and the means and methods that could be used to, to potentially achieve an ingress egress. I think, I think that's absolutely appropriate and we look forward to providing that.
We have clear direction, any further comment?
Well, this is, this is the first that I'm hearing of, that there's a problem in Summerbrook, so I, I would need to be brought up to speed where we are.
That, that the motion is to bring an agenda item back?
Yes, that, yes, information on, on.
I, I understand what the, what the motion is, but I'm seeing that my colleagues have been made aware of something that I'm not aware of, and I'm asked to vote on bringing an agenda item back. So that's what I'm saying, I, I, you know.
Sure. That's, that's why they're bringing the agenda item back. Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I, and I'm sure that the city manager and staff will do this, but I would be interested in whatever fiscal impact the city's involvement would have as well. Because we know what our budget is like.
Absolutely.
And just to follow, that's exactly the type of information I would expect to be in an agenda item. If we move forward, who builds the road? Is there, do we pay for it? Who pays for it? Is the developer still paying for it? If all that information could come back at once, we could, I, I think it could be a, a quick win if we just, you know, dot our i's and make sure we're all on board on the same page.
There is a motion on the table, see no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes five zero.
A, a second neighborhood issue I wanted to address, I, I know we've been working with the Providence neighborhood and they had a Renaissance plan and they were working towards a Neighborhood First Plan and there, there were some action items that they were hoping to achieve. And, and I think one of the, the bigger actions that they, they want to see, I think you all may be aware of the Alpine Apartments in the Providence neighborhood. Ryan and I went out there last year and helped a woman who was, who was tricked into moving in there and somebody had rigged up electricity and, and got her security deposit before she realized, you know, people were basically just squatting there. And I believe it's fenced off right now, but it, but it, it really presents a danger to the neighborhood and the community. And so they're looking, and, you know, Reese, this may be a city issue, it could also be a blueprint issue depending on the airport gateway corridor and if housing needs to be moved in and replaced, but their biggest, one of their biggest missions is, is to be able to revitalize that property. So I was wondering if we could just have an agenda item come back that would just kind of give us the history on that property? I think it's changed ownership a couple of times, what the code violations are, any illegal activity going on, and what, what steps we may be able to take to assist the neighborhood in improving that site.
If it's an information-only piece, will staff just provide that information to us?
We'd certainly take the direction of the commission if, if that's your, I'm not aware of this issue.
Commissioner Matlow, I, I think we all would agree for the information, but you're not asking for any action, you're just asking for an information. So why don't we just direct staff to?
Okay, yeah, well, sure. I, I mean, as far as, I, I mean, they've been in communication with staff, I believe, already, and they're looking for some type of acquisition. I don't know if that's through a city or CRA or blueprint acquisition, but I, but I think getting the scope of the problem with that property, and I, I'll add, you know, solutions to how we can help convert that to affordable housing that staff could come up with.
Then I'm unclear on the motion. Is the motion for information or for some type of action? Because the original motion was information only.
Sure, then, to, to make sure we have the chance to consider it, I guess the motion would be to, one, give us the update on all the issues with the property and to come back with options that could be solutions to rehabilitate or convert that property for affordable housing uses.
And what, what property is this again?
It's the Alpine Apartments, it's right before the Alumni Village property on the left, if you're going through Providence.
Motion on the table.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Porter. Discussion.
I'm not, I, I'm not sure if I'm understanding what we're asking.
I'm not either, actually.
I mean, just to be honest, but I mean.
I mean, I've talked to Walter about that issue myself and I understand what, what they're, but I don't know what, I'm not sure what the city can do.
And I've heard of some other issues with, you know, with Providence regarding CRA. So is this a city issue or is this a CRA issue that we're dealing with? Because if it's a CRA issue, then that's a different meeting.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, just a, yeah, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, maybe I could help here. I certainly, certainly think it's doable to have staff kind of create some background and information that I could send via email to the commission. So maybe, you know, you have the background and kind of help formulate whether that's a city commission discussion, a CRA discussion, or a blueprint discussion, if that helps move this forward, I'm happy to do that.
Commissioner Matlow, you're the maker of the motion.
So that info, I mean, would that information provide which best body and what, what, that's what I'm looking for, because I, I realize it, it could potentially be any one of our board's issues, because I believe that property may not actually be in the CRA boundary, I think it may be one step removed. I'd have to double check that. But, so, I mean, with lack of clarity, I think an information item coming back to the body to discuss, even if it's just information, to have an agenda item so then we can discuss next steps altogether on, on how we can find a solution.
Now, now, now we're back on just information only. So we went from information only to possible acquisition of property, now back to information only. I'm, I'm confused on your motion, sir.
Right, yeah, so I think it was to express the will of the board was not to take that next step with the action item, so I'm asking for changing my motion to have an actual information item come back, be an agenda item on a city commission agenda that, one, provides the history of the property and, two, provides solutions that may or may not be city solutions, could be this is the better path for blueprint or this is the better path for the CRA.
So an, an information-only item?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't want staff just to provide it to us earlier prior to the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I believe they'll, they'll put it out a week before the meeting so we'd all have a chance to review it and then bring, bring our solutions and continue the conversation.
Okay, motion's on table for an information item only on this particular piece.
Second.
Still have the second by Commissioner Porter, any, any other further discussion? Okay, for the information, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes five oh, we'll get the information.
And then a, a, a final just update, I know there was a lot of concern with the Northeast Gateway Project and traffic concerns and how they might impact Kalaran, and I know there was a conversation at the last blueprint meeting of whether those are blueprint issues specifically or city issues. Yeah, do we have any update? Or, Mr. City Manager, are we continuing that conversation with Kalaran to try to address those issues?
Yeah, I'll jump in real quick. Actually, I had a great meeting with the Kalaran homeowners board on Monday with the city manager, with Mr. Tetter. We spent a solid hour, hour and a half just talking through a lot of the internal issues, whether it's water, sidewalks, lighting, infrastructure, traffic as well. So the conversation's really going well. If you want to join in as well on particulars on that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to. Actually, I think the topic came up at the commission, it's been a while ago, where the neighborhood came and there was some discussion of increased speeds and things of this nature and the commission, you know, directed staff to go work with the neighbors and, you know, kind of keep an open dialogue. So our, our public infrastructure staff has been doing that, lots of dialogue with the neighborhoods about, you know, just traffic-related issues. They've identified some what I'll call low-hanging fruit crosswalks and things that are relatively easy to do. I, I think, Commissioner, you asked, is, is there a divide between the city and blueprint? I think there will be. Right, that's, that, you know, that, that'll come at some point, but our staff is, like they would with any neighborhood, we do it all the time, they're engaged, they're talking, there's certain solutions that have been identified, albeit small, I think, but, you know, they're not waiting, they're, they're executing within their authority. And so it was a good conversation that we had with the Neighborhood Association, but it was a, it was a continuation of the effort that staff's had for many months now.
Great. Thank you and I appreciate that update. That's all I have tonight.
Excellent. I have two items for this evening. First of all, I will reiterate it once again, I do agree. I think that we have too much litter and trash on the ground in Tallahassee and I am looking forward to some type of proactive plan moving forward for beautification so that we can move this community forward. Number two, I will be a little bit more bold in my statements when it comes to the homelessness issue because I am not satisfied with what this community is doing. Over the course of this weekend, I've fielded concerns from my friends and your friends and all of our neighbors of activity taking place on Lake Shore Drive at North Monroe Street, Pensacola Street, the homeless camp behind the Walmart at Bull Run Neighborhood on the north side of town, downtown Tallahassee, and of course, the Mahan Drive Shelter. We are at a crisis situation in this community and we must address what is going on with those that are experiencing homelessness, not only with service provided towards them, but how it is impacting our community as a whole. It is not acceptable. It is not acceptable what is going on, on, on Mahan Drive. If I could wave a magic wand, I would shut it down immediately. I think that the mission is admirable and I think all of us, deep down inside, whatever our religion is, or what we believe in and how of higher power, all have the drive and the need to take care of our fellow man. But to what extent, to the detriment of our neighborhoods as well that have been pre-existing? It has to stop. Madam Attorney, can this board, right now, shut down the CityWalk Shelter?
Mayor, the city could not do that. But, you know, what we could do if after this period of time passes, I believe what staff has done is given them until February 4th to file the appropriate application. After that point, if they fail to do so, certainly we could go into court and file an action to seek to close it down if it failed to do so.
Mr. Manager, can you give us an update of how in the world did we get to where we are today?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And actually, the city attorney shared some of that. So this is clearly a, a really important, critical issue. And we've heard, we've got a lot of emails and we've heard a lot about it. And the CityWalk, it, part of its ministry has expanded its, its operations to include what used to be office buildings on Mahan Drive. Becoming aware of that, our staff, code staff, both management staff did engage with the, with the operators. Their current use is not in compliance, it's, it's a, a non-conforming use. I think I'm using those terms correctly. And so the, the, the role that the city didn't start it, so there would have been no notification. The posture that the city is in, as we follow the code process that says if you are operating out of compliance, whatever, whatever the operation may be, you have an opportunity to bring it into compliance, take the necessary actions to do so. Staff gave a deadline to February 4th to do so. We, we don't know what actions the CityWalk may or may not take. They may seek compliance, they may cease operation, we don't know that, but we are approaching that deadline. If they do seek compliance, there is a DRC, a Development Review Committee hearing that would be conducted in relatively short order to evaluate the steps necessary to seek that compliance. I can't opine about what that committee may or may not determine, but that would be a step in the process. If they don't seek compliance, then it would be necessary to take action. I'm sorry, I seem to have lost my microphone, necessary to take action. I think that's what the city attorney is alluding to, is that, that, that would then be the step in the process. So it, it, it is out of compliance as we speak. The owner knows that. They've been given time to remedy or not, and, and so that's where we stand today. So we're in a compliance period as we speak and, and the operator has to conform or action will be taken.
I am frustrated beyond belief and I believe that the system has been taken advantage of. I believe that we have an emergency temporary cold night shelter that was, well, opened under the guise of an emergency temporary cold night shelter that here we are, weeks and weeks and weeks later, is still operating. I have grave personal concerns that overnight, a shelter that is not in compliance, that is housing registered sex offenders or registered sexual predators this close to a neighborhood and heaven forbid, a preschool across the street. There is definitely room in our society, our caring society, for this mission. There is definitely a place in Tallahassee to take care of those less fortunate. It is not on Mahan Drive, period. And we have got to do everything in our power, in my personal opinion, to relocate, if not completely shut down, this particular homeless shelter. Now, I know that I'm a little worked up and I'm, but, but I feel the stress of my friends and colleagues and neighbors. I feel the stress of Tallahassee. It is getting to the point to where every day we are fielding calls about solicitation in neighborhoods, about aggressive panhandling, which is illegal, knocking on doors in neighborhoods. It is making people extremely uncomfortable and fearful and we need to address this issue. I'll tell you another one. I don't know how we're going to do this, Cassandra, and we talked about this today. We have confirmed through some of our shelters that we do have other jurisdictions, as Commissioner Richardson said, that are truly shipping their homeless to our community, which I think is about as inhumane as it can be. Out of my sight, out of my mind, go to Tallahassee. And that has to stop as well. Now, I don't know if we can en- engage Chief Sestram of the Circuit or, or who we need to do to make sure that we don't have judges in other jurisdictions basically mandating people to come. I don't know the, the, the right process of whether it's you reaching out to the city attorney's offices or county attorney's offices where we know this practice is taking place, or if I'm picking up the phone and calling my colleagues and saying, you gotta stop. But you can't buy tickets and just put your homeless on the bus and send them to Tallahassee. I, it makes you wonder what people are thinking.
Well, well, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I know you, I know you ratchet up. Let, let me help you ratchet back down. If you're, if you're in a place where you do not have the capacity to help or provide, is it truly inhumane if you try to get them to a place where they can get services?
No, but I'm not sure that that is truly what their motivation is.
Okay, I don't, I don't, but that's, that's exactly right. We don't know, so we cannot assume. And I, I want to deal with the issue that we have in front of us right now. We, we, we have some stresses on Mahan, North Monroe, and West Pensacola.
I agree. Let me finish my comments, Commissioner, okay? I do want to know what's going on and I do want to know if other jurisdictions, if they're releasing people out of their correctional facilities, if they're putting them on government vehicles and driving them to our jurisdiction to drop them off. I think we have a right to know exactly what's going on in our community. We have to address the homeless camps. Look, we're either going to enforce the code or we're going to make an exception. And correct me if I'm wrong, but there's only one legal place to camp an extended period of time in Leon County and that is the county's Lake Talquin Campground. So hey, are we going to enforce our local code or let's change it? Whatever the path is that we decide to do. But just sitting back and doing nothing is not the answer. Okay, so I'm done. Let me close on a very powerful high note, too. Commissioner Williams-Cox, you represent this body on the Big Ben Homeless Coalition and you've done so extremely well. I know that you have, you are new to this argument on our behalf because we just made the appointments, right? And you're doing a great job. And I know that you're showing true leadership with the coalition and you're doing everything you possibly can. And I think I could speak for the four of us that any way that we could positively help support, we will.
Well, let me, let me, thank you for saying that, Mayor, but let me just say, because I heard somebody said tonight that, that these folks are not equipped to do this and the people saying that are not equipped to do it either. So the, the people who are doing it, they're doing their level best. And on those calls, we have people from around the region, we have about eight counties on that call, as well as providers and partners. And so you got, you, you've got like the cross-section together, one person may not be an expert, but you got enough of them there together to have enough information. And so the surrounding counties are included in these meetings and these conversations. Our owner, Benner, and Delmas Barber, they're also a part of that, that conversation and they are, they too are doing a dynamic job. We just haven't been able to rassle it to the ground. And watch the, the county commission meeting, they're planning to do a workshop on homelessness. I suggest that instead of us doing this, that we come together and find a, a solution, a comprehensive solution that works for the whole county. See, the luxury we have is that in this county, we have one city. So we don't have to pull other cities into this. We ought to be able to bring the county, their staff, us, us and our staff, and community partners together and let's figure out this people puzzle. But we've got to still do it in a humane way.
Absolutely.
Um, we, I mean, we gotta, we, we gotta have empathy. And I understand, you know, we, we have people with records and people who shouldn't be around children and things like that. That's why I'm asking, right now, can we step up some enforcement, at least be more visible to try to deter them from, from, from venturing off into the neighborhoods and the communities? So just as, until we can continue to try to figure out how to make this, this thing work. I, I don't, I don't know the answer, but what I think what our neighbors are asking for is some relief, like right now. They don't have, they, they can't wait until we figure, till we get together and figure out. They need some relief right now. When they go, when they go home tonight, they don't want to see, you know, that's what, is what I'm saying. So we got, we got some short-term things we need to do and then we got some long-term things we need to do. And we already had a workshop on homelessness, so we already know how difficult it is. But now we need to come with the county and let's work together to solve this problem.
I agree. I agree. I think, I agree. Said my piece. Had a long night. Let's all go home and enjoy our families. We stay adjourned.